For order, I'd like to remind everybody you're being televised on our own television station.
What happened to our persons?
Hold on, please. Mr. Beattie?
At an inappropriate time, I'd like to ask that we add an item to the agenda.
All right, well, no, not yet. Let's take attendance, please.
Marty, can you take attendance?
Do I have the, uh, this? There we are. Um, Valerie? Not yet. Not yet.
She's not coming?
Not coming. All right. Tony?
No.
Valerie?
Yes?
Here.
Yeah.
Here.
Michelle?
Here.
Emily?
Yep.
Jim is here, Tony's here, and Mike is here. Okay, it's just missing Valerie.
All right, thank you.
Problem passing with the branch.
I'll give her one.
Patrick, you have about ten.
Next item on the agenda is approval of minutes, which are in your package.
Are we gonna do all?
You could, if you want, unless there's any changes.
Let's try all three. Yeah. We can do this since though, yeah. Do you move all three?
Is there any amendments, deletions, corrections, comments to any of the three minutes that are moved? I hear none, and all is in favor of approving all three, say aye.
Aye.
Are you opposed? Any abstain? All right, thank you. Uh, Mr. Beattie, this might be a good time to...
I'd like to add an item to the agenda being, uh, it's, uh, it's new data on their old business, and that's the man's argument. We finally know how much money we need to complete that, and we'd like to get that going.
Okay. 9A? Second. All right, it's been moved in second, and is there any objection to adding that item? We could add it, say, as a 9A. Okay. There is no old business. I'm gonna jam it in somewhere.
We have two different formats.
Right, this is an education, I understand.
One for education, one for, just so you know.
Tony's moved in, it's been seconded, is there any discussion? All is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? All right, well, it was 9A, Tony, thank you. All right, opportunity for the public to comment on agenda items. Is there anyone who'd like to address this? Okay, I don't see no one, thank you. Senator, the board of the chair. A couple of things. I had a meeting with Kelly to discuss Kelly's role as previously appointed chairman of the Long Range Planning Committee, and as to what would be her role going forward insofar as with regard to goal three. Pat terminated that portion of the Long Range Planning Committee and has been proceeding with item number, goal number three. But I agreed that the board should have in place a long-term planning committee for all, for many other reasons, with a goal toward looking ahead and being proactive to the extent possible, being sure things are adequately funded, and budget requests, instead of having to deal with items after budgets have been passed, things of that nature. And so I do intend to have a, not a separate, but a long-term planning committee with a separate goal, I guess, at this point, of the things that are ongoing, in addition to the things that are ongoing with regard to the goals one, two, and three that we have before. Is that fair to say now? Okay, I mean, that's what we discussed, and I think that's a smart idea, so I plan to do that, unless anybody has any objection. All right. The other thing, I did send out an email with regard to this consent agenda item. And I don't, I'm not asking for any, uh, action on it tonight, but it's provided by Robert's Rules of Order. I think it would help us save time, instead of, it doesn't, may not seem like a lot of things, minutes, field trips, things that are completely uncontroversial. The way it works is if you have a consent agenda like this, comes before the meeting, wherever it would be, it might be now, after the chairman's report, after the superintendent's report, these kinds of things. I would say, does anybody have any objection to having it just approved without discussion? If any member wants to remove any item from the consent agenda for any reason, he can do so. All they have to do is say they would be numbered, one, two, three, four, they're off, they're lifted from the consent agenda. They're either off or they're on. You can't take it off for a little just to ask a question and put it back on. If you want to question it, it's off. And then the ones that are taken off for discussion, the question is, will they be discussed right then, right after the consent agenda, or will they maybe, excuse me, will they be placed in a place on the agenda, the appropriate place? But the ones that remain, uh, if there are some that are still there, those can be approved by affirmation, with no, really not even a vote, just, unless there's an objection, they're approved. And so I think this is something, I've read, you know, articles on this. One of the best-kept secrets of efficient boards is the consent agenda or consent calendar. Some decisions are either routine or so widely supported that you make approval in separate action to bog down the group. And it goes on to discuss it. So, it's something that I'd like us to consider, it would be a codification of our agenda that we've had longstanding, but I'm gonna ask the superintendent, and I'll get together with her, to present a motion to be made with regard to that, and then see how it goes. So again, it's intended, uh, if anybody has, wants anything lifted for any reason, it is lifted, there's, so there's no problem with that. If you saw something on an agenda that you didn't understand or wanted more information about, you could ask the superintendent the week beforehand. So it's intended to just quickly deal with uncontroversial items. So, I intend to introduce that. All right, with that said, uh, that's my report. Superintendent's report?
Yes. I have a couple of different things, I don't know where you want me to talk to them about. One is I want to introduce possible schedule that I'm thinking about, and it kind of fits in with Ann's doing, but I'll introduce that first and just give you an idea. I've met with many constituents, not everyone yet, about the current schedule at the high school and the middle school. My goal is, um, twofold. Number one, to get the middle and the high school on the same schedule. We have got to get to a point where we can share staff and share resources. Number two is, probably three, three ideas. The second one is to really look at the opportunities that we have for kids, and how we can start to really think outside the box. At the budget meeting, I will be introducing virtual high school, and that's going to allow students to take more AP courses, allow students to hopefully take more college courses, have a little more flexibility in the schedule. So that's another big issue. And then the other one is really to get in line with a lot of the mandates that our district has not really followed through on, that should be followed through on, some special ed issues, some SRBI and RTI issues, which is an intervention program. So, um, this is what this represents. Not everyone is happy, but I think it's really important that we make the change now. I'm not asking you to vote on anything now, I'll come back in two weeks. I want to have some more informational meeting for some parents and from students. I'm going to, on Friday, put this in the newsletter with a survey, where anybody can take the survey and just give me their impact. We still can have some of the traditional doubling up of courses and time that we have in the block. So for example, you can marry two courses in English and a Social Studies and have team teaching. So that can continue. At this point, and I haven't sat down with the union yet, but all teachers will be teaching five classes, and then they would have two free periods. One would be a planning period, and one would be a teaming period, or a PLC period, or a period where they met with their peers to plan, to have professional development, to look at student work, to provide interventions, all of those kinds of things that really we're moving into. So, um, it is something that I believe very strongly in, I'm not, um, and one of the reasons people are saying, "Why are you pushing this, there are so many changes?" The reason I'm pushing this is because this is the foundation for all of the other decisions that have to be made in the next couple of weeks. For example, power school, people are starting to be trained. We have to put our schedule information into that. Budget, I have to now look to see, you know, maybe we can share staff, maybe we can, you know, move some people around. Maybe we're gonna make some changes and get some more electives in there. You know, you have to make these decisions, this is the foundation, before you move forward. So that's what I'm doing. You can see, just so that you, it is a six-period day, but every student has seven periods. So one period drops out each day. The other piece that this addresses, which kind of gets lost in the shuffle, is that the middle school staff feels very strongly about increasing the period length time because it's too short. They have kids for like forty-four minutes, and it's just not enough time. So what this schedule does, it gives everyone fifty-six minutes a period, and then again, we can combine. As I said, it's, I want to get feedback from people, I want to hear what they think. I'll come back in two weeks, I can do a more formal report, if you're interested in that. But I think, as everyone will say, and this is like I'm gonna have t-shirts made, I think, we know we need a change, but we just don't want it to affect us. So that's what everybody says to me. Yes.
I have two questions, Pat. One is that it appears that it's a four-minute break between classes. You think that's gonna be sufficient, depending on where your classes are?
Oh, absolutely. That's what they have now.
All right.
Absolutely.
And then the second question I had was, you had talked a while ago about looking into what's going on in classes and the amount of instructional, real instructional time versus the amount a lot of the period, and did that play at all into your thinking?
It has, in some areas, it has. I think there were certainly some subjects which are, and some teachers who are more comfortable with the block. I think some subjects, it's a little harder to fit that, uh, your curriculum in for the eighty-five minutes. I think it's hard for a lot of kids to sit there for that long, if it's a subject that they're not really fully engaged in and maybe don't enjoy. I don't want to speak specifically about what I've seen, because I don't really have a large enough sample that I can make. I can tell you that the staff in the schools are really dedicated to the kids and work very hard with the kids, and Kim and Teresa and their staffs are passionate about their instructional program and what goes on with the kids. But I also know, I've been reading a lot about change and, you know, change action, and just, you know, people get nervous, they get nervous. And, you know, I think, as a leader, sometimes you have to make decisions and take me out of people's hands and do what's best for the kids and the district, and I think that this is what's best.
I can ask one third, final question, which is, when do you anticipate, assuming you get your comments and you decide to go in this direction, when do you anticipate implementing it? Second semester this year?
No, no, no.
Or first semester next year?
Next year. The 2013, 2014 school year.
And is there a reason why, if it's such a good idea, is there a reason why you wouldn't implement it immediately?
It would be too disruptive to change midway, because what we're gonna have is semester classes, and, so you could, you know, we have to look at the curriculum. You know, algebra now is given in sometimes two and three pieces, it has to be given all year long. You know, we have a lot of work to do. So, and, you know, we'll support everybody in the work, and, you know, it'll be okay. I think it'll be okay.
Thank you. Sure.
Two, two things that I think I would just want to hear about. One would be, and you might not know this yet, but I know some, you know, parents will be nervous, they've planned out a plan for their student for the four years with the block, trying to get, make sure they get everything in, and just so they would know how that would affect them and their ability. I'm assuming, actually, it would make it easier to get the classes in with this parent, but I'm not sure. And then the other thing that I think we just need to make sure, we're doing, we've been teaching on the block for a long time, and have been explaining why we felt that that was best, and, and so I think we just need to make sure we're explaining why this is better educationally, you know, especially really speaking to the parents about what we, what you found, what everyone's found, and why academically this is, this is the best.
I agree a hundred percent. I agree a hundred percent.
Just a nitty-gritty question. Science at the high school, any lab period?
Yeah, we would hook it up with one of their electives.
Okay.
So you'd PE, and if you didn't have PE, you would be hooked up with another elective.
Okay.
So you wouldn't have it one day.
So some days you would have labs, and other days you wouldn't?
Right, exactly.
Okay.
So the students will take six courses?
Take seven courses.
Students take seven periods? How many periods do the high schools near us, Brookfield, Newtown, how many do they generally run on their schedule?
Um, Newtown has a seven-period day, okay, and I'm not sure if anybody drops out. Brookfield went to a four-by-four block a couple of years ago, which meant they had an A day, a B day, an A day, a B day, so they had to take classes all year. Where I came from, we had a six, we had an eight-period day, two blocks, two dropped out each day. Um, you know, I don't want to get into specifics, but we, we're not in compliance in certain areas, and this will help. It will help. It'll also offer more opportunities for our students.
Is it enough periods, you think, we needed that eight block, or?
I think seven is okay, because, you know, I, I have to be cognizant, the more periods you put in, the more staff you need, you know, so I have to watch that balance at this point. And the other piece of this is, and I've spoken to the principals, I am not in such a state, you know, that it's, if it doesn't work out, if we don't have, if we have to tweak it or here and there, we could still do that. But I think we have to try. And, you know, if we keep the things the way they are right now, you can't compare staff that works in the middle school and the high school. It's like comparing apples and oranges. They're on totally different schedules, and you can't see, can I use them in a better way, is there a more efficient way? It's just, so that's one of the areas. SRBI, which is an intervention program for kids, that is mandated. We, we're not following that right now, the way we need to, because we don't have intervention time. And when we do have intervention time, it's done in a, an informal way. Okay, so, so there are just, um, things that, you know, I think we need to do. I think, you know, there's a, there's a lot of support. It's gonna go both ways, it's gonna go both ways. You know, it's just gonna go both ways, and I think, you know, we try. So, go ahead.
Sorry, say, for example, the student who's going to be a senior, having gone through three years of the other, they'll be able to do okay, in your estimation?
Oh, absolutely. Absolutely.
Complete their work.
Absolutely. Because most of the seniors who are left in the school, who are in good standing, they need English, they need history, they need a math. You know, you, you know, that's what you need. Other than that, things are electives, so if you're in good standing. And well, you know, I'm happy to sit with Todd, who's here, and go through, and, you know, check every student, and make sure, and do what we need to do.
Oh, it's just being presented as an idea?
Yeah. The other thing I'm going to do, which is, and aside from this, is I purchased Two Million Minutes. I don't know if I spoke to you about it. Two Million Minutes is a documentary, documentary from 2008, and it talks about the two million minutes that kids have in high school, and what do you do with those two million minutes. And it follows two American students, two students from India, and two students from China. I would love to show it to you at our next retreat, and invite the principals, the administrators, to have some common conversation, but I'm also going to have some sessions with parents. And I'm gonna show the movie, and we're gonna break out, and we're gonna talk, and really look at what does this region and this community want for its kids. Because I need to hear that from them. And we need to really look at the world, and maybe take off some of the rosy glasses sometimes, and just look at what are our expectations, and if we're happy with our expectations the way they are, then, you know, we adjust to that. If we want to push higher and push harder, then we adjust to that. So, and that's just a thought, the high school, and I'm just talking in general of, um, life, I think, anyway. Then the second thing is, and I don't know, this is probably number three, I'll hold this for number three, because this is about Mr. Costa.
All right. Anything else?
That's it for now. Oh, and retirement, congratulations. Charlie Batch Helder is retiring on October 26th. He's the four-five instrumental music teacher.
So do we have a plan for, I mean, October 26th is next week, so...
We have interviews scheduled for first round within a week, but there will be a lapse, and we'll have to have six.
When did he give his notice? If you don't mind.
Two weeks ago? Three weeks ago?
Yeah. We had it, we had a position posted for two weeks. We contacted...
Is it a one-point-out position?
It is.
Okay. Relatively easy to...
Is there a motion to approve the, accept the retirement?
Yes, so...
Second.
Been moved in second, if all is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? Thank you. All right, next item is CAF report, Dr. Stone.
Yep.
These things.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, they're pretty kind of us. Well, they are right now.
Karen, right here? All right, well, tonight we're going to look at the CAF. This is something you have requested, to have a deeper look at the CAF. I will tell you in a nutshell, our reading and writing aren't terrible, but they could be much better. Our science and math are bottom of the dirt, and we are working on figuring out why that happened this year, and looking at different assessments and ways to monitor the children along the way so that we don't have this happen again, or at least if we do, it's not a surprise to us. So I will walk you through this, like we did the report last year, that you seem to like, with the colored pictures. So we start with the introduction about CAF. There's nothing new here, this was the seventh administration of the CAF III, so there is not new news. But something that keeps coming up, so I address these questions at the beginning. Does size matter in our small school district? Yes, of course, each, each student is worth a larger percentage, they're all worth more weight in the scheme of things, but that is also, our high-performing students are worth more as well. So you will note, I hope, as we go through this, that the only other district that looks like us in size in DIRG-C is Bolton, and their performance lines are nowhere close to ours. So I don't think that we can say that being small is making us have low scores in the science and math. That's not an excuse. So when we look at page three, we have chart A, and you can see, I put the numbers on region 12's line so that you can tell which one is region 12. There are sixteen districts in DIRG-C, and that darker blue line is Bolton. That is the only other district in DIRG-C that's close to us, that has between sixty and one hundred graduates in here. So that, that is a similar-sized district. On page four, it's the same information in a radar graph, which I happen to like, but people might think it's a little busy, so I presented it both ways. The brighter blue in the middle of that radar graph, the brighter blue color, is region 12. The darker blue is Bolton, so that you can see how we compare size-wise. Thought that was a nice visual, to be able to see how we compare size-wise. And when we start looking at the performances, you'll see that the size really doesn't matter at all. So the next page, on page five, does the schedule matter? And here I have all of the sixteen DIRG-C high school schedule configurations listed, and I've color-coded them by block, straight schedule, or something with a rotation in it. So the rotations are blue, the blocks are, there are three of us, region 12, region four, and Tallinn. And then the yellow is no rotation. So, so that as we're looking through the data, or as you're looking through it even in more depth, you can see whether or not it really does make a difference. I will tell you that Tallinn oftentimes is near the region 12 performance band, but region four is not often by the region four band. So those are the other two block schedules in the DIRG. Just to be clear, there's no preponderance of evidence that the schedule is making that much of a difference. I know that when we, when we do look at which districts are high-performing, they are the districts with the straight period. You will notice Canton blowing the DIRG win, they are a straight eight, I mean, a straight seven. Bolton, who looks like us size-wise, is a straight eight, and they are always at the top as well. So it seems that the straight schedules tend to have, maybe it's a coincidence, but they tend to have the high of performances in our DIRG. So, moving on to the results, the language arts. We have both reading and writing assessments in the CAF. The reading is broken into two parts. There is reading for information, which we scored okay on, we're in the middle of the pack, and there is response to literature, which we did not do as well on. The response to literature is a fictional piece that the kids read, and they have to respond to it. The reading for information is nonfiction, so I guess if I had my druthers, I'd prefer they could read the nonfiction and comprehend if they're reading more accurately than they could the fictional pieces. So if we had to have one strength over another, one of those areas over another, I'm glad it's the way it is, but we have room for improvement in both of those areas.
You have any idea why there's a difference, why there are more in one kind of reading?
I'm, I'm not, other than, I, I am making an assumption, maybe I shouldn't, but it seems obvious to me that with our humanities classes melding the content of the social studies with the language arts classes, with the English classes, there's more opportunity for that type of reading, and I, I'm assuming that that's why. We're delving into the curricular pieces and the assessments, it's an ongoing process. Mrs. Gallo has established time throughout the year that the different departments are working on curriculum, and it's embedded, so we're looking at all of this. But I couldn't give you, we haven't done an experiment on it for me to be able to tell you definitively, but that seems to be a logical explanation.
Mm-hmm. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I have a question. You said that we're in the middle of the pack in, in the chart D reading scores, as opposed to the response to literature?
No, she means chart F, on page twelve.
No, on the...
Reading for information.
The reading scale score is what you're looking at.
I'm sorry, I am chart F, is, is it one where in the middle of the pack, is that?
We are in the middle...
Page twelve, page twelve.
On...
Page twelve.
Yes. We're not at the bottom.
We seem to be at the bottom in chart E on page ten.
Yes, we are.
On page twelve, we, although you could say we're in the middle of the pack, I don't know if the trend line is quite very good. We've been at the bottom in 2008 and 2010. We got off the bottom into truly the middle of the pack in 2011, but we've dropped since then. And I think the whole, the bottom of the pack dropped too. We're not quite... We're not quite as precipitous as some, but I'm having a hard time seeing us with a good trend, even though we seem to be technically in the middle, the bottom of the middle.
Well, it's not a, it's not a good trend.
Can wait till you get the science...
It's, uh, that's, uh, that is not our worst case, in terms of that. So were there questions about the reading? I do have the proficiency bands on page, sorry, I'm looking through there.
Fifteen.
No, it's on page seven, the reading proficiency bands. While we did not have a good year in 2012, we have seen worse, we have seen better. Yes, Kelly?
Anne, I know you've been working on the elementary schools very hard, and you've gotten some really nice parity and increases in scores there. Is anybody gonna look at how many pages our kids are reading in middle school before they get to ninth, tenth grade and take these courses, this test? Or is anybody gonna look at the curriculum of the middle school to see that they're being prepared in terms of reading a lot of literature? Some of my constituents are young, they're twelve, thirteen, and they tell me that they don't think they're reading enough.
Really?
They tell me they're not reading enough fiction. So if there's a correlation there that they see, I'd like to know, what are other school districts reading? How many pages are they reading? How many novels are they reading? And can we correlate that back to our results, and perhaps find that we need to prepare our kids in six, seven days?
Right. Well, everything, I will tell you, is being looked at, everything. Even at the elementary, where things seem to be in pretty good shape, everything is being looked at. So we're, we're really focused right now on the Common Core standards and making that shift, and we're looking ahead at the S-Back, as that is coming at us. There are some, there's the same skill sets involved in the CMT and CAP, I mean, reading hasn't changed, writing hasn't changed, as far as what is reading, what is writing. We're looking for different things, and we're focused in on different things, but they encompass what we had focused on previously, so it's sort of engulfing all of it.
I just wonder if our curriculum is rigorous enough in...
Well, that's what we're working on. That, that is what we're working on, yes.
If I can just add, what they have found is that our kids graduating from high school nationally are not reading text at the college level, so that when they're prepared to go to college, at that freshman level. So the new assessments are increasing the level of the texts, so we really have to start to embed that in all of our classes, really important.
But that backs all the way down to kindergarten. Our level of kindergarten expectation now has bumped up from a C to a D. That doesn't sound like a lot, but that's huge. And that ripple effect goes on up. In fact, the luxile levels at the high school, at the eleventh grade to college-ready, the end, don't even overlap what the end top expectation was previously, is now at the bottom of the beginning expectation for that band.
So we need to align there. I think our elementary scores and the performance has been outstanding.
Yes.
I mean, we're ranked in the top by any measure of our elementary school, so maybe the curriculum, we could spend some time in the common learning program.
We are, yeah.
I know you've done so much work on the elementary level.
We are, we're, we're headed that way now, so I assure you it's going to look different. Any other questions about reading? We'll move on to writing. Writing across the disciplines includes three assessments for the CAP. There are two pieces for interdisciplinary writing, and I think I've only given you one chart on interdisciplinary writing. And then there is an editing and revising piece as well. You can see the performance bands on page fifteen for the writing, efficiency levels for Region 12 over the years that we've been giving this CAP test. The, just to be clear, the upper blue and the purple bands are the goal and above, the advanced. So those two combined are what we look at as a score, we tend to think of as our score. So we did okay this year in writing. There's, of course, room for improvement, but that was our strongest area on the CAP this year, was the writing. The scale score, we were not anywhere close to the top of the DIRG. Most districts in the DIRG improved this year. We too improved, because we were at the bottom of the DIRG the previous two years by quite a bit. So we really focused on the writing, because that was a huge wake-up call for us, and it paid off, as you can see. So the interdisciplinary writing piece, we have the comparison of the DIRG on chart I on page seventeen. And then the editing and revising piece, we made continued growth in that as well, as you can see on page nineteen. Okay? All right. Any questions before we move on to the assignments?
Thank you for the extremely detailed post-mortem, I appreciate that. I'm sure it was as painful for you to do this as it is for me to look at it. I guess my question for you involves what you just mentioned earlier in response to Kelly's question, which is next steps? And when you would expect to come back to us with what your plan will be to try to reverse some of this?
All right, well, I think that those conversations can be ongoing.
Definitely. But in terms of what we could experience, you know, I mean, I'm assuming, I'm particularly, as Kelly mentioned, I'm particularly concerned about what's going on, not at the elementary levels, I think the scores are showing that we've got great things going on at the elementary levels. I'm particularly concerned about what's going on at the middle school level, because that's, I don't think it's fair, just because the test is in grade ten, to really blame the high school, when they've had their kids for two years as opposed to three years at the middle school. What's going on at the middle school level, in particular building through the high school, to try to really reverse the trend? And whether that's something that you think we could expect to hear at the end of the year, or whether that's even still true?
The work is ongoing, so I could give you monthly updates if you wanted, on the work that's being done, so it...
Well, I mean, I think I'd leave that up to you.
But we can definitely report, report to you frequently on what's happening in regard to addressing those concerns.
Yeah. And, you know, I was looking ahead into the science and math area, because clearly the trend in the writing is improving, and that's good. There, what I'm seeing is almost a high-low situation, where if you look at 2011, in a number of categories, we were as high as second in the DIRG, and then we drop into the basement below everybody else in 2012. And I'm wondering how influenced these scores are by the sample sizes? And, you know, I know you looked at size schools in the beginning, but I, I'm, I'm just trying to understand how we go from one year being in the middle of the pack to the next year below the line, the next year we're near the top of the pack, the next year we're totally in the basement. This just really is odd, I mean, it's like a seesaw.
Well, it's not so much sample size as it is makeup of the group.
Yeah.
The cohort, the makeup of...
Well, but doesn't that go to sample size? Because with a large enough sample, your cohort isn't gonna really shift from year to year, because you're gonna achieve the mean more, you're not gonna see that.
Sure.
So it's gotta be sample size as the driver.
Too.
I may be wrong, you can tell me if I'm wrong.
No, I mean, there are, you know, I don't wanna single out some population of any kind, so I don't even wanna say that. But some, some classes look different than others in the makeup of the class, and the needs and deficits of the class look different from one year to the next, as do the strengths. So, I mean, you can see other high lows too. I mean, if you looked at that red line, Canton, that seems to, you know, knock it out of the park every year, they have these huge peaks, and to them, it's a valley, but we like the little valleys. But they, they do have peaks and valleys, and you'll see that with every, every school in the DIRG. For us, it probably is a little more pronounced, because of our students counting for more than one percent, you know, of that.
Well, it's just that my, my concern is that some people might look at these scores and draw the conclusion, what are you guys teaching? And I'm not sure that that's it, I, that's the reason why I asked the question. I need, I wanna know whether or not there's some degree of, these would be smoother curves if we had either a larger population to deal with, so that you're not, you're not as, as held captive by the high and low performance in a given class.
Well, I, I do think it's that the makeup of the group does contribute significantly to this type of, of a range, because these same cohorts have these same highs and lows all the way from third grade to eighth grade. So from third grade to eighth grade, we're seeing the same peaks and valleys in those same cohorts, so to me, it speaks to the makeup of the group.
Okay, thank you.
Could you go to work in averaging, would that help?
I'm sorry?
Could you average them?
Could I average them?
Over five years?
The data, I could do that.
No, but I...
I'm not sure it would help.
I know you could. Would, would it make, would it be more meaningful?
No, I don't...
Supposed to give us a reading in tenth grade?
Being the one that averaged it five years, what's happening on that test?
But the issue is too, that we, we are addressed, we are attempting to address those needs of those specific cohort groups too. And for us, we don't wanna mask the fact that a particular group needs a particular intervention, or that a particular group has a specific strength that we wanna teach to that strength. So we're wanting to, we wanna see, not that peaks and valleys are good, valleys aren't good, but we wanna see what it really looks like, so that we can address and meet the needs of the students.
But that's been going on for several years, isn't it?
Peaks and valleys, I mean?
Mm-hmm.
Yes, it has. And just by the nature of individuals being individuals and cohort groups looking different from one another, it's probably room to continue, peaks and valleys. Every district has those. We, we just don't wanna be at the bottom of that batch of ones that goes across, so...
At the beginning, you pointed out the schedule differences and where they are, based on how the schedule layout is, and we're talking about changing our schedule. What other points or things are you seeing in their schedule that the other schools that are doing better are offering? Is it their curriculum that's different, or is it just, I mean, did you study that to see why are they succeeding so much, what's different in their curriculum, besides just the schedule that is giving them that, that edge?
Right. I, I don't know that their standards, I mean, they're teaching to the same standards we're teaching to, that's a given. What the delivery looks like, I couldn't tell you. However, I will say that in our current schedule configuration, we do know, the fact is that the students are either in something and it has finished six weeks ago, when they take the CAP test in March, or they just started something six weeks ago, and now they're taking the CAP test in March. So either way, it's not a piece of what they're currently doing. So if you had a year-round class, and you had six months to prepare within that class with that same teacher who knew the CAP was coming the first week of March, it seems to me that you could be better prepared for it. And that seems to be, I mean, the higher performing high schools seem to have those types of schedules. It could be a coincidence, it could be, but it just seems pretty evident that if you're working with somebody toward a goal that's six months away, that you're still going to be working with that person when that event occurs, it just makes sense that you would be paying attention to it as a student and as a teacher.
Shouldn't we do something to make the curriculum fit the necessity there?
Fit the...
The schedule, they know when the test's gonna be. We can move our curriculum around to make it...
To fit the schedule?
Yeah.
Well, I suppose that could happen.
Well, if it would help the kids do a better job and be prepared, it would be worth it, wouldn't it?
Well, I do know that for math particularly, this went on last year, that they rearranged the curriculum to fit the block schedule. So in math, last year, a lot of work went into that, to fit math into the longer block schedule, and what to do in that eighty-plus-minute block. So we did, we did attempt to do that just last year, and...
Well, you're working toward two different goals there though, aren't you?
Well, that was the emphasis last year, when we thought the block was here to stay forever, and that's just what we had, and we were trying to make it work. So I know the teachers worked very hard to try to make the math courses that we have currently fit within the block, and that's just one example.
Well, if the block doesn't fit the test, testing schedule, and the kids are still hampered by that.
Right, but we can't control the, the testing schedule, we're told when those tests happen. So the CAP is, is, we are, we have a calendar from the state that tells us when it has to happen, and it's a window, but most districts choose to do it the first week of March.
I just wanna revisit Franny Keiko's suggestion again, 'cause I think it's an excellent one, about looking at a district that is consistently at the top of the DIRG, like Canton you mentioned. I think, first of all, my gut is telling me that your supposition about the schedule and changing the schedule right away will help. I think that's true. I guess we'll find out next year. However, I would guess that if you did a site visit there, I'm not even talking, has to be like weeks, could be even a day, looking at what do, what do they think is contributing to their high scores, I think you would get some very interesting comments from them, and might be well worth your time to do that. I'd be curious.
I'm sure that would be interesting.
Yeah. We're talking about Bolton and Region 12 being very similar, so I've kinda focused on that. Then I realized that Region 18 has almost the same size school.
Yes.
Few, few more students, but then you look at their line, which is that light line in the various places, they don't have the spikes as much as we do, and they certainly are higher than we are on most all the charts. It's unfortunate we can't put it up on a board and eliminate ninety-five percent, so when they see two of these, it gets difficult. But did you, did you think of Region 18 as being...
They're one of the lowest, they're one of the smallest five, because I did have, this is pared down, believe it or not, someone said it's heavy, but I took about half of it out. But I did add it grouped by the smallest five, and ran the data that way, and yes, eighteen was one of them.
But eighteen seems, looks to be, yeah, more consistent over the years, with the peaks and valleys that we do. In fact, the difference in between is so small that I think it's not good to draw, I couldn't draw a conclusion based on one or two points. But I could see when the line is more straight, and ours goes like this, that something, don't know what it is, but something is different that maybe, that's another school that we looked at to see what, how they avoided the peaks and valleys.
Well, I think Pat alluded to the survey effort earlier, and that's a piece. We have to make sure that those valleys don't continue to be so far between the peaks. So if we have a strong survey program, if we have a strong intervention program at our secondary level, I think that's gonna help. And I forget, you said it, that we can't just look at the high school, that's true, we can't just look at the high school. They have had, high school has had the students for not even two years when they take this test. So the intervention programs that have been so successful at the elementary level, we are now rolling up to the middle school level. The math intervention program is now all set and ready for the middle school. We have to have people trained, and we have to be able to buy those kits, so that's in the budget for next year. But we also have the LLI that is now coming out for the middle level, and is applicable to high school students who are not achieving at high school level. So I think we have some really great things in the works to address that, so that the valleys aren't so low. Because currently, there's really, there's, it's catch-as-catch can, it's not, it's not established, and it needs to be established. Michelle?
I think we had asked about a couple things to just kinda get a sense of what was going on with this class, and one was to look at the cohort. of what was going on with this class, and one was to look at the cohort. Even though I know that the CMT is not the same as the CAP, just to see sort of where they had been trending in their math and reading and science, and see how unique their performance was to them specifically. But the other thing also, I'm kind of curious, especially as we're looking at changing the schedule, looking at our students, maybe SAT, I don't know what else to look at as a measure, but, okay. Because, you know, if you want to really evaluate whether they're getting the material, that's early in tenth grade, so I guess, and then SATs are usually taken in the eleven, right?
Well, they, they can take them.
It's just another measure to really gauge whether our kids are getting the material. Because I don't, you know, we seem to struggle with the CAP.
Well, the PSAT is a fairly good indicator. In fact, Maine uses that as their cap.
Oh, really?
Yes, the PSAT is, has been vetted to be.
How many students take that? If that's optional. What? Oh, okay, okay, good.
Unfortunately, Greg just left. I had two points, a couple things he said and Larry said, particularly about the DIRG scores. The DIRG are supposed to represent schools that are similar to ours in all kinds of ways. I've always felt that that's an artificial construct. I don't like the DIRG concept, because our kids are going out there in the real world and competing with kids from all over. And when I started senior in high school, no one asked her what DIRG she was from. They didn't care. She's going out there and competing with people in all the other DIRGs, and even playing field. So, when our scores are put against everybody else, it might look, you know, even more problematic. So, that's one concern I have. The other concern is that, I know we talk about sample size and things, but it's an interesting exercise to go to the state site and spend a little time running these CAP scores through the various filters. The state has a lot of filters. And when I did that, I found that no matter what filter I used, the scores ultimately came out the same. So, that would take out some of our outliers potentially, or adjust for different cohort mixtures. And you can do that repeatedly at the state site, and just see what you end up with. And you can run a report and ask other schools and other schools in general. And I see that they're fairly consistent. So, I don't think that that really answers all the questions. I'm more elated, again, as you said, delve into curriculum, and see if we have curriculum constructed that's really rigorous enough to meet the requirements.
Well, I will tell you, just to make it expedient and let Todd do his report, we were at the bottom of the DIRG in science. We were at the bottom of the DIRG in there. And the last page of this report is our next steps. So, the next steps is exactly what we've been talking about, to work on the curriculum, the alignment of the curriculum, to make sure that all of the pieces are in place, including the assessment piece, and that there is sufficient rigor as the children go through all. This is district-wide, this isn't just high school, even though this is a high school test. This is sort of a culmination of all of the grades that, and the work that has been done before they take this test in March of their sophomore year. So, I am happy to report back, anytime you would like, on the process and the progress that we're making toward that end. So, Michelle?
I just wanted to, am I missing? So, is the CAP disappearing, just like the CMT? So, going to the S back?
Yeah.
And just, the CAP and the CMT, I know they're different tests. Are there generalizations you can say about how they're different, what type? I mean, is the CAP a more open-ended, or is it more of a?
CAP is more application.
More application?
Yeah, and the CMT is more skill.
Okay.
So, I mean, just to sum it up.
And the S back?
The S back is application.
Is application, okay. So, this might be a red flag, but that's going to be tough for us.
Well, I mean, it's different than this, though. It's a very different test. So, yes.
Kelly?
I think we might have a repeat of the charts on page twenty-one and thirty-two, the science and the math. I think there must be a, I don't want to change.
Twenty-one and?
Thirty-two.
K and T?
Twenty-one, okay, thirty-two.
One is science proficiency. Oh, the numbers are the same. You're right, I apologize.
So, I was just about to make an observation that if, well, whichever ones these are, whichever matches up properly, but if we have fourteen point three percent of our students working at an advanced level in science or math, and Dr. Constantino would like to bring in some really great AP enhancement, whether it's online or whatever, we need to get the scores up or we won't be able to have students who will be able to take advantage of those great programs. You know, we need to see improvement in those scores so that they will be able to have success in that level of curriculum challenge.
It's not percent, it's fourteen point three students.
No, that's percent. That's percent.
Of the tenth grade?
The entire column is one hundred percent. I apologize for that being the same. I don't know how that happened, because I had the science and math on different spreadsheets, so I apologize. I could bring that back. Michelle had asked for the, this cohorts group, the group trend data from grade three to eight, and I do have that. If you would like, I could just email you those changes, so that you have them.
That'd be great, thank you.
Fourteen percent's about ten states.
I just have two questions. One of them is, it's just as a matter of, I mean, it has nothing to do with us really, although it kind of does in other things we're talking about as far as population of the area, student population. If you look at Bolton, who we've been comparing ourselves to a lot, on page three, how did Bolton's student population go from high sixties to low seventies, high seventies, all the way to one oh one this year?
They must have had a bubble.
I think something else must have happened.
They just built a new high school.
Was that a track?
They just opened a new high school, and they do take kids from Columbia. They do take like a Sherman, like a K eight district. They just opened a new high school, I have seen it, it's beautiful. That can be a motivator.
My second question is, you know, very often, it's east of Hartford, east of Manchester. We are given this information, and we as a board, our heads explode as we try to deal with, you know, positive, sawtoothing, dismal-looking things. But what does our superintendent think of this?
I do not believe that these scores are in any way, shape, or form should define our school system. I know that, first of all, the CAP and the CMTs are different tests. So, you will see statewide, the CAP scores go down as compared to the CMTs. But I think that, that in a school like this, with this population, with this staff, with this administrator, these scores should be much, much higher. And I'm not a believer in that one score says the whole picture and says everything that's going on, because there are great things going on here. But there has to be a focused plan of action to do well on these tests, because these tests are the tests that represent you out in the world against other schools. And that's what people look at. When they look at your high school, they look, and they see your scores, and your scores are in the paper, and they're just not where they need to be. And, and I'm not sure why. I have a lot of different things going around in my head that may be why. And that's one of the reasons why I'm pushing so hard to move the schedule. Because I think we have to have interventions for kids. If the world has changed, teachers are now accountable. You have to know when your kids come into your classroom, what they know, what they're able to do. You have to be able to assess them, and then you have to be able to plot growth. And if you don't do that, you never know who is falling behind, who has cracks in their development, whether it's math skills or any of these things. And, and that has been the atmosphere of high schools for many, many years, not just this area, many years, and it has to change. And when we find kids who do have holes and who do need support, it's our job to provide that. And we don't have time right now to do that, okay? It's always Band-Aids, we're always putting on Band-Aids. You can't do that. And Kelly is correct. You have to have kids who understand how to work and be rigorous and engaged and be able to access content at a high level, and that's what we have to make sure we're doing.
Anyone else? Thank you.
Thank you, please.
All right, thank you. Next is Class of Two Thousand Twelve Report, Mr. Dyer.
This is an additional document on Rutgers today. It's not the complete document, I'm only taking excerpts from it. Good evening. Thank you for giving the opportunity to speak with you about our children, our students. This is the seventh time I've come for you, in this capacity. And every time that I talk about our students, it really gives me pleasure, and as this is time, so I have a lot of information to share with you. In the past, and I sort of inherited this report, and I've sort of gone along with it, and it's been very similar every single year. This year, I'm going to start off with a little different vision. In addition to that, in the packet, you'll see there's some other items that haven't been there in the past years. And Dr. Constantino asked me to speak about the standardized testing tonight, so I'm going to do a overview of the SAT, the AP, the PSAT, and ACT, with an explanation about what those are and how they impact our students. Before I get going, I want to talk a little bit about what success means. And I think it's really important for us to be thinking about that, and especially this board, to be considering the question, what does success mean? And the reason I'm asking that question for us to discuss is because in the past, when I present the graduating class report, I've done it in reference to college admissions, the next steps for our students. And I think success is much more broadly defined than that. And I'm going to make that argument to you, and then explain to you what I mean. Okay, so if you look at the first document that I shared with you, the Connecticut College and Career Readiness Toolkit, this is put out by EPIC, the Educational Policy Improvement Center, developed it on behalf of Connecticut's P-20 Council, which is the Board of Regents. And I jumped to page nine, and I gave it to you so you can reference this at your leisure, if you want to have some late-night reading, please feel free. But I jumped to page nine because I like what they say about college and career readiness, and I think it's an important step. And basically, what they're saying, if you look down there, that it's not just about the acceptance, I mean, that first paragraph, it's more about a crucial distinction, that college eligibility is not the same as college readiness. Historically, many high schools have emphasized getting students accepted into college, a heavy focus on meeting criteria for admissions. When in fact, if you look down to the next sentence, it is really about what students need to know and be able to do. And that's an essential question that we've been looking at at SHPOG, both constructionally, and what is it that we want our students, when they graduate from high school, to know and be able to do. And we really want kids to be able to enter the workforce. We want kids to be able to enter college or that training program and be successful in that. And if you look down below, David T. Conley and his colleagues at EPIC developed these major areas. It's key content knowledge, key cognitive strategies, key learning skills and techniques, and key transition knowledge and skills. These are the things that they've identified, not me, but I agree with them, that kids need to know when they leave high school, to be successful in the world of work, be successful on college campuses, be successful in their time. So, I want to put that out, because I think they're talking to us about what is success. The second packet that I gave you that was not involved, or the second handout that I gave you that was not in the packet is the Board of Regents for Higher Education: Post-Secondary Enrollment Completion Patterns of Students for Connecticut Public High Schools. This is a cohort study of students that graduated in two thousand four, where they were in two thousand ten, so a six-year study. So, it looks like this. I'm going to draw your attention to the roadmap or this pathway in the second page. And what they did, this group took the thirty-five thousand students, you can see their little graduation path is, okay? And they tracked them for six years. And what happens in terms of their completion of a certificate within that six-year timeframe? And in the state of Connecticut, forty-one percent in six years completed a certificate, two- or four-year degree. Thirty-three percent enrolled, but never completed within six years. And twenty-six never enrolled. I think this is important for us as a state to be looking at. The Board of Regents is arguing that it is, and that the majority of jobs in the next five years, if not already, are going to be much higher percentage that need a college education. How is this relevant to SHPOG? The information I gave you passed that, if you look down the scale, if you jump to page forty, you can find SHPOG on this list under Region Twelve. Region Twelve's success rate of college completion for the class of two thousand four was sixty-four percent, far exceeding the state's post-secondary credentials, of those thirty-five thousand students at forty-one percent. I dug a little deeper into the data, and there was only eight schools ahead of us in the state of Connecticut, out of the one hundred and seventy-four on the list, that had a higher completion rate than we did. We were ninth on the list, putting us in the top five percent of schools in the state of Connecticut for our students' success when they get to college. So, again, I asked that question, how do we define success? And my ultimate goal is for kids to have a successful life, to be happy, healthy, and whole. I know that for them to be able to do that, they're going to need a career that's going to be able to pay the bills, that's going to be able to give them the level of their happiness that they would like to achieve. And I really feel that having a college education is a big part of it. To that end, I think we're doing great job. Questions about the report? Couple other schools, just so you know.
Excuse me, just to, I'm sorry, I was just to say that it would be interesting in the years coming to see that every year, if you can get that.
It's a five, they started, it looks to me like it's a five-year report. So they've started collecting data for 2009. If you go to the Regents' website, you can see some of the statistics for the 2009 class. That will come out till 2014, or 15, so a six-year study. Uh, because the reason that is, is because colleges track graduation on a six-year. They don't track it on the four-year because the, the figures would be dismal. Most kids aren't graduating in four years, so that's a sad fact.
Are we part of the National Clearinghouse? Do we belong to them?
The National Clearinghouse.
Yeah, because that's where this data comes from. Because you can join them and you can get this information then, like every year, I think. We have to look into that, National Student Clearinghouse.
That would be a next step.
Yeah, we'll talk about that, because that will give us some of that information.
I think it's interesting, I, you know, I went through and pulled out the top eight schools just to read them off, you know, you're probably somewhere looking. But number one was Ridgefield at 73%.
You're always number one.
What's that?
You're always number one.
Weston was on number two at, um, 72%. Westport was three at 71. Wilton was four at 69. Daniel Hand was fifth, 67% completion. Six with Joel Barlow at 66%. Sebick was Ivan at 65th. And eighth was the Connecticut IB Academy, Mies Hartford, 65%. Chappau was ninth with 64%.
Todd, these statistics are, are eight years old, correct?
2004 is when the kids, uh, graduated. The statistics are from 2010 is when we tracked them. Because it's a, it's a cohort group, they follow them, watch it through the. All right.
Michelle.
Oop. Yes.
I was just wondering, and I don't know if you'll know this off the top of your head, but do you, because this is just one class of students. Do you remember this class and whether they were one of our peak career valleys?
I was actually not here before at that time. I, I joined your school in 2006.
Okay. I don't think.
It's something we could go back and look at.
Just curious if that was an exceptional class or an average class or, you know, I mean, it's fantastic statistic.
It's a great statistic.
It's wonderful, wonderful, I'm just curious.
Because I think, you know, there's a lot of different ways, you hear from me in a lot of different ways how we can define success, this is one of these. All right, on the left, I'm going to start on the left side of your packet, you'll see this brochure. I just wanted to highlight our scholarship process at Chappau. Um, you've heard from me before and I've said it in front of parents on a number of occasions. Um, the generosity and support of the community in Chappau and surrounding towns is amazing. It's, it's far beyond anything I've ever seen in the five high schools that I've taught at. And, um, this is a culmination of a process last year. We really came to that together last year to reorganize the scholarship recognition process under Principal Gallo's leadership into a night, a celebratory night, that we could recognize our local scholarship recipients and showcase a generosity of our, in support of our community. Um, and you can see this was public knowledge, this went out to the papers, so these were publicized. I did a quick estimate, I don't have exact figures, but over $125,000 was awarded that night to our students. And, um, you know, that, that's exceptional. And when I say exceptional, it's just beyond belief to me when I came to this district. So, very, very excited. All right, the next piece is our published list of future educational plans for the class of 2012. Eighty-three percent of the class was accepted to post-secondary school programs. Um, 66 of those indicated to us in June that they were 10-4-year programs. And here's the institutions listed that got published in. The next page is, uh, declared majors of students. And again, declared as of June, when, when they were telling us where they were going. Um, and I gave you a three-year trend to see sort of where the majors are. I think that the most interesting to me of looking at this, um, on the declared majors page, is the science and pre-med. We've seen definitely an increase over the last five years. And that increase has stayed steady the last three years. And I think that's really important. There's definitely a need, um, for people entering those fields and there will be jobs in the most part, in those fields also. I'm really excited this year with the addition of our freshman academies that we subscribe to under Dr. Constantino's leadership. And we're, we're going to go with that, the experiences that our freshmen will be able to, are taking over there for years in the academy of science program. Um, and I think that that's directly toward our ma, our largest major the last couple of years. Questions, comments about majors? And to jump to the admissions competitiveness, and before I do that, I've received questions the last three, maybe the last seven years in regards to competitiveness and students enrollment. And, um, I want to talk a little bit about this. The competitiveness, both on this chart and the one that's following it that shows our students in, in terms of which schools they're in, in the rungs, is based off of Barron's profile of American colleges. It's a standard. We needed some standard, it was a standard I inherited seven years ago. I haven't made a change to it because it's what's been in place. It gives us a viewpoint, um, it gives us a point in time. It's important to note that Barron's, when they're looking at their competitiveness in colleges, is looking at, um, their acceptance rates primarily. That's how they're basing competitiveness. Uh, so if a school chose to take a risk on someone and their acceptance rates were not as high, that would mean that they wouldn't necessarily fall into that most competitive category. Doesn't mean that they're not the most competitive school. Berkeley, for example, doesn't fit into that most competitive. We probably all are good at this very competitive. But they take risks on kids, they will take kids outside that normal acceptance. So their acceptance rate's a little higher than other places. I think it's also important to frame competitiveness in a context of history. Um, one of the articles that I quoted, and I'll pass it out at the end, um, that I'm talking about tonight, I have a reference sheet of articles, quotes a, an example of Yale. And Yale in 1938 had an acceptance rate of 70%. In 1980, that acceptance rate dropped, um, to 25%. And it is now 8%. I'm not singling out Yale, neither did the author. Um, but while using it, highlighting the trends of colleges now. When we look at acceptance rates in the last five years, definitely the last 10, the acceptance rates have gotten much tighter. So what that means for our students is they're in a much more competitive market when they're looking at college admissions. And that is, um, you know, that's the, the name of the game. Um, in terms of our acceptance rates, so if you can see the last five years, our acceptance rate, um, in the most competitive schools has remained fairly stable. Our class size has diminished, you can see the number of students in our class size. So our, our grouping that we're comparing against has been definitely decreasing in size. Um, but the acceptance rates to colleges about the same. It also mirrors the acceptance rate at those colleges. If you look at the majority of the colleges and took an average, it's probably about 20% acceptance rate for most of the schools, it would be on that list, somewhere in that range. Some may be a little less, as I said, Yale currently 8%. Some may be a little higher, closer to 33%. The second number on is the highly competitive schools. And you can see, um, our year, this last year, 2012, was the highest in seven years, um, acceptance rate. Um, the last highest was 2005, which is 63%. Again, class size is, is decreasing, but our acceptance rates are, are fairly stable. So between the most competitive and the highly competitive schools, we had an 81% acceptance rate, which I think is.
Excuse me, Todd, looks like this class of 2004 is about at the middle of the pack if you look at it in comparison with, um, these competitive acceptances. So a, a, an average class in Chappau came out the top 5% of state. Okay, go ahead, Todd.
Yeah, so that's, that's a good point that I, yes.
Just a quick, quick question for you, I'm looking at the, this chart, which is.
Oh, you're cheating, yep, let's go.
Okay, um, college acceptances. And, for example, under most competitive, on the top you have Cornell.
Yep.
But if I'm looking at future educational plans that are not on this list, does that mean that they decided not to go to Cornell?
Correct, yeah. So this is acceptances, not necessarily declare. And I think there's a lot of factors, that question has come up a lot, I didn't actually prepare a response. I've talked to that before, but I'll talk to it again. There's a lot of factors that go into a student's and family's choice as to which school they actually can, the acceptances is one thing, but going there is a whole nother ballgame. Um, and many times it comes into finances, but not always. Sometimes it's, um, location, sometimes it's, um, family history. Sometimes it's the major, you know, they really like another school. Um, sometimes they got better off, you know, they, they have something that they got in a financial aid package that just is sweeter than the other schools.
Which is why you, on this chart, feature percentage admitted as opposed to percentage enrolled. That would be lower.
Yeah, there's so many factors that go into an enrollment. The acceptance, I think, is important for us to be looking at because the student then has that possibility of going if they so choose. Their, their choice is a hard thing to quantify. You do exit surveys on them and find out exactly why they didn't go to this school or this one. We're not at that point. So I think it's important to look, you know, we got our most competitive and highly competitive schools, or student acceptances. Very competitive, the competitive, less competitive. And again, this is Barron's rating system, the special, unrated, and non-competitive. And again, Albany College of Pharmacy is unrated or falls under special. It isn't, that it's non-competitive. I don't necessarily agree with the way Barron's, you know, categories is everyone, but it is the system that we're currently working with. Other questions on schools on this?
I'm trying to correlate the, um, acceptances of the educational plan.
I'm not wrong.
Well, I'm just trying to see if, you know, if there were, just for the most competitive, there were six.
Seven.
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight.
Eight.
There were six schools, but eight acceptances.
Yep, right, right.
And then you say there were eight admitted in most competitive. On your other sheet? Percentage of accept, percentage over here? This is eight admitted.
Right, if you look down the list, Cornell, Lehigh, Tulane, Edinburgh, Rochester-Rochester, St. Andrews-Vilanova is eight. The number at the top is incorrect.
Right, oh, I know, but no, but that's six because it's different schools, I guess. But what I'm saying is, when I go over to the future educational plan, I don't see Cornell-Lehigh or Tulane on them.
I think that's what we just.
Yeah, they, they got accepted, but they didn't go.
Right, they're not going, but the eight were admitted to most competitive schools. So where did they go?
I didn't track that here.
No, what I'm saying is, if there were only six schools that admitted, that accepted them, and if the future educational plans show where they went, if I don't see three or four schools on here, where did they go so that there were eight? Oh, this is admitted. This is, I'm got it. We have to have a third one for, uh, got you, all right, thank you.
Okay. Is a question to answer?
Oh, yeah, I have to answer.
Other questions about the competitive list? Okay. Um, the following then, after that is, is just information to give you a background as to sort of the guidance department's, um, operations and, um, some of the information that we track. As I said last year, and I showed you a little piece on Naviance last year, we are tracking that in Naviance. Kids are using Naviance to organize their own college process. And then we're tracking Naviance data, um, and that's how we're getting the information that's here. So you can see the mock database, and I'll just walk you through one. This is Dr. Euphoria, not a real student, obviously, health sciences, GPA, sample of the test scores, college applications, the acceptances, deferrals or withdrawals, and then denies. Okay, so that's the information that we're tracking. Um, and then the following after that is just a brief smattering of some of the, um, paperwork that comes out of my office. The first one, or the, this one actually is just an overview of how many applications were processed last year. And you can see that the trend, and I think it's important, the trend is for most students to apply to, you know, five or six. You look at number six, um, you know, in the middle there, six applications, seven students did that. So majority were that range, although we had quite a few students that applied to just one school. There were 11, and nine that applied to nine, so that's 65. Total applications last year was 281 processed. And then some other, um, paperwork, this is the fall checklist. This goes out to the seniors in the fall, it, it follows up a summer letter, um, giving them a breakdown on the things they should be working on as they're coming back for the school year. The second one is a, um, parent's, a senior parent letter, talking about, um, information night and also reminding them of some of the upcoming programming that goes on. The next one is just a flyer, showing you an email blast example, the college admissions seminar and the financial aid seminar.
It's great that you put those on, I mean, I know it's part of your job.
Yeah, I think, you know, that's one of my next steps also is to look at ways to increase that and increase our audience. I think, you know, we don't do enough, um, in terms of reaching out to middle school parents or even elementary school parents. Sorry, this is aside, but I was at a college board workshop two weeks ago and they were talking about a new, um, financial planner module that's in college board. And she did a ha-ha just for a minute, and if she had a third, fourth grader, she plugged in the figures based on a 5% increase of what the cost of tuition would be. And then assuming that her daughter was going to graduate in five years, what the total cost would be, and it's the price of most people's houses. When I started, long, long time ago. All right, this, the next one is senior weekly updates. Every two weeks we go into senior projects, the council, either Mr. Science or myself, and we do a quick, an overview process with them. But we, we, when I originally started, we did a large presentation with the seniors and I just found that it was completely overwhelming. And this way, when we do it every two weeks, they're about 15, 20 minutes. Um, they're, we're trying to break the information up into smaller chunks, so it's only slightly overwhelming. Many of them are still tuning us out, but at least they're hearing it repeatedly and in different formats. Uh, the next one is the letter about financial aid. And financial aid really is, is the second tier of this whole process. Application, getting into school is great, but for many people, paying for school and trying to figure out how to manage that piece of it's also really important. And so that we, we work, um, hand in hand with the financial aid process. And the last is, um, last year's school profile, just outlining, um, the little pieces of our school, you know, just highlighting some of those things for the college admission officers to understand what it is that we're about, who we are. And you'll notice the graph on the front, um, I made it a three-year composite class because I found when we look at a one-year, it's really hard when you have 65 kids to get an accurate view of what that looks like in comparison. So that's a three-year breakdown of a imaginary, you know, our composite 257 class if we were to take three years in a row, those three classes, my GPA scale. Just so we could plot, get an idea where students could fall. Questions on the left side? All right, I'm going to move over to the right, on the right side. We're starting with the post-secondary plans. And this is a breakdown, um, looks like this, this sheet, those are the, took apart the packets. This is the sheet we're talking about, okay? This is post-secondary plans, it's a three-year view, starting with class of 2012, 2011, 2010. See the number of students, it's 65, 79, and 76. And then when we look at it, this is number of students attending four-year schools, it's 41 students, not a percentage, it's a number of students. The second part is attending two years is 11, huge jump in the last two years. And the gap year, that's been trending about the same, two to three, a little, 2011 it was five, which was a little bit of a jump, but tend to be about two to three students a year that are thinking, are doing gap years. Directly to work has been about the same, about 10 students per class are going directly to work. And then transition has been consistent the last three years, as is the military, last three years.
Todd, what's a gap year?
Yep, I'm going to talk about that. Um, gap year is a year when a student has been accepted to college but chooses to do some type of program abroad. They sometimes are affiliated, sometimes not. The difference between a gap year, to me, and taking a year off is that they're some, they're affiliated with some organization. For example, Woofing. Woofing is worldwide organized organic farming. And so we've had quite a few students the last couple of years do Woofing. And so Woofing is an actual organization. They're signed up with it, they pick out their spots across the, the world, and they go from spot to spot, working their way around the globe. That is a, an actual program. A kid that tells me, "Well, Mr. Dyer, I'm thinking about driving across the country", that wouldn't be a gap year, okay? If they're going directly to work, that would, they would most likely be in our work numbers because they're probably getting one. Transition programming is a continuation of our high school in some way, shape, or form. Those students are still under the auspices of Region 12 and they are building towards that completion steps. They've met our goals here, but they're continuing in transition programs outside. So we've had a student.
In order to obtain a diploma?
What's that?
In order to obtain a diploma.
To complete the diploma, yep, steps. They've met the academic requirements, but we've identified other areas that they still need to work on. All right, I'm going to jump, hold on to this one, because I'm going to jump into the SAT for a minute, and we're going to use that scale, the SAT review at the bottom when I'm talking about the SATs. So as we jump into the SAT, this is the document I'm talking to. This is directed from the college board. And what you've got in front of you is a three-page document because it's broken out by critical reading, math, and button for writing. Okay? And you can see it's a five-year view, so 2008, 9, 10, 11, 12. And there's a comparison to Connecticut, and there's also comparison to the nation, the total group. The nation is 1.5 million students that are taking. And you can see that we've been very strong over the last five years. There was a dip in 2012, which I found was very interesting and surprising to me because I thought the 2012 class was stronger. So I'm going to come back to that, but I'm going to talk about this a little bit. You can see that compared, if you look down in the bottom right, there's a box down there that says mean scores and point changes by year. You can see the change from 2008 to 2009, we had a jump. To 2010, jump, 11, a jump, and then a major dip in 2012, right? But overall, overall, an upward trend in our students and their success rate with the SATs. You go to the second page, it's math. Math trending, again, higher than the state. Last year, same as the nation group, the national group in total. And again, trending still overall, a plus seven. See the bottom corner? So it's been upward trend throughout, although last year, 2011, our testers didn't do as well in the math. There was a downward trend, but overall, above. And then you can jump to writing, the third page, again, above the state and above the total group. Last year's was a significant dip, and, you know, again, I found it surprising, and overall dropped us to a minus four, because the trend had been that we were increasing our scores, we were doing better over time, and I found that interesting. Questions about this before I talk about the other page in our list? Okay. Let's go back to this. So what I did, I did some little digging, and it really hadn't jumped out to me before. I've looked at this data for years, but it didn't jump out at me. And basically, this data is off the last sitting of a student. So we encourage our students to take it twice. Many of my students take it three times. Very few of them take it once. And if your last sitting is your lowest score, then your scores really aren't going to reflect as well in this report. If that happens for the majority of our group, and we had 49 kids that took it, so for us, again, a very small pool of kids, 49 out of 65 took the SATs, then we would have a, that could really skew the results. So what we did is we did what was called a super score. A super score is what most of the colleges are looking for, although not all are, and that's why I included it on my list of references. You're welcome to look and see what the college board talks about a super score. A super score basically is if I take the test three times, and in January, June, and October, say each of my tests from each of those test dates, one of the scores was the best. So in January, I scored the best in math. June, I scored the best in critical reading. And in October, I scored the best in writing. Most colleges are using that super score as the score, okay? Knowing that, I assumed the college board would have been doing the same thing. I called Alan Bernstein, who's our regional rep, and I said, "Hey, Alan, I got our tests, or I got our results. One of our students is missing." He said, "That's too bad." Happened to be a 710 student. Would have affected our score, because that would have put us at 50 kids instead of 49. He said, "The report's already out." And I said, "You know, when I super score," and you can see the difference here, "our critical reading goes to 530, our math goes to 526, and our writing goes to 529." He said, "Well, that's great." I said, "You know, in this report, what happens if all my kids on their last test date didn't score as well?" And that's what the result of this score is. He said, "That's too bad." He's like, "If I was you, I'd encourage you to call the papers and let them know that this is what the report's based on." As I said, this goes out to everybody. I said, "Well, that's not really, you know, that's not really responsible on your end. Charge us $200 for this report, what am I doing? Buying your report."
In this box where you show the super scores?
Correct.
State of Connecticut scores? Are those super scores for the state of Connecticut?
They are not, right.
So the same would be true with them?
It could be.
So this is really apples and oranges?
It is, but if all of our kids did their best testing on the last testing, which could happen, and what his argument was that most of the kids were, and that's something I need to go back, I didn't do that. If their other schools did their best testing on the last test date, or say they only tested once, then it's an apples and oranges either. I mean, I guess that's what I'm saying. It's sort of like hit or miss. If it happens to be that my kids do it best on that day, great.
Right, but that's kind of what this is showing, the hit or miss. Whereas this is, you know what your best scores are in Chappag. We don't know about state of Connecticut. So the same could be true for them, so these super scores could be different too if you took each of these kids' best scores.
Right, and I'm not trying to mislead you in any way you could perform.
Oh, no.
I'm trying to show it as a comparison of what that means in terms of our super scores and how, you know.
But you're comparing them against somebody else's non-super scores.
I'm finding some mark. I don't have a super score mark for Connecticut. So this is, this is the end test date for Connecticut. So I agree. They're not the same, but it gives us a point of reference.
I'm, yeah, I'm just saying that it's a non-data-oriented point of reference.
Fine.
Yeah, the same concern, that's the same concern I have, when we look at our scores versus other towns or other schools, they also are using the same criteria. They're not pulling their super scores out either. So we have to look at apples and apples, oranges and oranges, just to make broad comparisons. And in terms of broad comparisons, what concerns me is that we huck the mean too much.
The what?
We're hucking the mean too much. We're just hugging the mean of the state, and we do not spend per capita on our students anywhere near the mean for our state. So I think that disparity of what we spend capita on for people and what we are getting in terms of results on our mean score five years, really diverged, and that concerns me. I also think that we need to decide where we want those scores to be and decide if what it being that close to the mean is acceptable, and if not, I might as well go back.
You know, I think, you know, overall, we'd have to probably see the trend of all years, because we're looking, I agree that the 2012 scores are anomalous, you know, if we look through. I don't think, definitely in the critical reading, we've been much stronger. 2008, we were weaker, but if you look 2009, 2010, 2011, we were much stronger. I think we need to see what the means were with the state. It's not a fair comparison, because if we don't know where the state was, it doesn't give us an idea on those years.
Well, you've got a trend graph there for those years with the state as well.
Yeah.
And we're having the mean on all three, too much from my perspective.
Other comments on the SATs? I'm going to jump to the PSATs. The PSATs, I only have a two-year report because we went to testing during the school day two years ago. This is our third year school day testing. The reason for that move was that we, I found we had a low number of students that were taking the PSATs on Saturday. For whatever reason, it was tough to get kids to come here on a Saturday and take the PSAT. I have a captive audience at the PSAT. It's a voluntary program, so it's not mandatory at this point, but it is a much higher percentage of students. And you can see, these are for juniors, and we have two-years report here. The second page is the class of 2012, okay? And then the first page is class of 2013, our current seniors, okay? You can see in 2012, if you look at the back page, 40 students took it in 2012 out of that class. And there were 65 students in the class in 2012. And then in 2013, the class of 2013, 66, and there's 84 seniors this year, so 66 out of 84. Again, this is information from the college board, and it gives us a performance overview of our students in comparison. If you look down, and I'm looking at 2013, the 66 11th graders, the most recent data, critical reading, math, and writing. And if you can see on critical reading, the school scored a 52.7, the state of Connecticut 45.8, and the nation 46.0. For math, 50.8, state was 45.4, and the nation 47.5. And in writing, we're closer to the mean there with 48.2, state was 44, and the nation was 44.8. Although it's not an accurate predictor completely of the SATs, if you add a zero, it gives kids a fairly good idea where they're at, so that would equate to like a 527, although it wouldn't score that way, a 508 and a 482. Those percentages would come up on the SAT that way. And you can see also on the bottom that college readiness benchmark, and this is an arbitrary figure that the college board has set out, and it equates to about a 510, that they feel students should score on the SAT to be ready to enter college. And 50% of our students were listed as being college-ready based on their performance on the PSAT. Compared to the nation of a 34%, and although it wasn't listed here, I went and got the documents for the statistics for Connecticut, which was 37.3%. So Connecticut was a little higher than the nation, but nowhere near Chappag's performance. And you can look back to the year before that, and the trends between the two were fairly similar. 51 to 52, 52 to 50.8, and 49 to 48 between the two years. Questions on the PSATs?
What's the issue, Port? I don't recall seeing that before.
This is new.
Okay.
It's new. And we get this report because we went to school day testing, and we're working on getting most students. I wouldn't say all, but most students.
And I think the important thing is this little pie chart at the end, it shows the jump 5% as far as college readiness.
Yep. The next one is the ACT report. ACT is, I always call it the other test when I talk to kids, because a lot of kids are like, "What's ACT?" And there's really two major tests out there, the college admission process game, just like there's, I would argue, two major hamburger chains. You've got the Burger King, you've got McDonald's. And they both sell hamburgers, they both have something like a Whopper, not exactly the same.
You know what your preference is.
Yes. I have it embroidered inside my jacket. So the ACT, you know, has more sections. It tends to be a more straightforward questions instead of the SAT, which is more of a reasoning test. It goes more back toward curriculum for the most part, although if you look at some of the ACT examples and the SAT examples, I think the question's almost exactly the same. ACT has a science section. One of the other big differences is that it goes after advanced math, so kids are need to finish Algebra II, but in addition to that, they need to have trig. And the writing test, colleges like, whereas they still don't like a writing test on the SATs. Many of them are not using the SAT's writing test, whereas ACT, they like it. Because ACT is more of a big-picture exam, the comprehensive score is more important. And you can see the five-year trends for us on the report here. Where at the bottom is class of 2012, lower number of students taking the ACT than the SAT. Although, you know, I like my students, we like our students to take both. It's not, it's popular test, people don't know about it as much, so it's not always the one they choose. A lot more students are choosing the, almost double, right, the SAT. So last year, in 2012, 24 tested. In the state, there was 11,000, and again, the trend is much smaller cohort group than at the state level, too. And you can see overall the different composite scores, or the different section scores, and the composite, which was a 23.0, state was 23.8. And the 23 correlates to about a 510. I'm sorry, a 530 is about the correlation of the ACT.
Todd, I may be misinterpreting this, but looking at the math and the science columns, we are behind, have been behind the state in all five years, I think, equal to or lower than the state.
Some of the first to be looking at, for sure. Yeah, I agree 100%.
Just out of curiosity, can you make any generalization over the students who elected to take the ACT?
They tend to need more, I think, direct, you know, more on top of the game in terms of the college process, thinking forward. Usually pretty strong students. Yep. Not always. Sometimes students will take the ACT, so probably half of them are fit that profile. The other half are students that didn't do well in the SAT, and so they're taking the ACT to try and see if that will improve their score. Sometimes it does, and sometimes it doesn't.
If they're supposedly stronger students, why are they below the state?
Right, and that's what I just remembered, probably half of them.
But isn't it true that this test is heavily taken by those who are applying to Midwestern?
No, no longer. No longer. ACT and SAT are interchangeable at this point. It used to be that it was a Midwest or West Coast test. It's not that way anymore. ACT is used to manage the SATs. There's some nice graphs here that I think are important for us to be looking at and definitely require further study. One of the pieces on the second page, it's interesting because they track how many classes in a sequence students take and their success rate when they've done that. So if we look at math, for example, and this is under Figure 2 on the second page, students that have Algebra I and II, geometry, trig, and calculus, had a 28.5 composite score on the math score compared to the 26 within the state. Same thing on the science. If you look, you've got a kid that's taken the Science IX, Biology, Chemistry, and Physics, doing better than the students in the other ranges. Makes sense. More curriculum, right, further along. And the last bar graph, students for college-ready work is defined by a score of 18, the benchmark score of 18 for English, 22 for math, benchmark score 21 for reading, 24 for science, and then all areas. And you can see the breakdown there. We were strongest in English, above the nation in Algebra, Science, Biology, and in all areas, but behind other state testers everywhere except for English composition. And my last area of discussion is APs. This is an AP report. It's a five-year summary report from college board. It gives you 2008, 2009, 10, 11, and 12. You can see that 12 was our strongest year, with 82% of students, meaning the benchmark score of three or higher, which many define as college credit. And you can see it was trending, 2010, 57%, 2011, 63%, 2012, 82%. We were trending 2008, 2009, and there was that dip back down in 2010, which we saw in other places also. You can see on the right, total AP students. And again, this is a whole group, not just the graduating class, this is a whole group of students, they don't disaggregate it that way. But you can see 41 in 2008, 40 in 2009, 28 in 2010, 24 students in 2011, and 34 in 2012. And then the scores, the number of exams taken, students with scores of three-plus, and then the percentages. And you see how we compare to Connecticut, graph below, and then globally. And another one for further study.
Do you think, I mean, I guess I could just talk to Kim about this. Is this something I could send a press release out on as communications? Because I get so much, just chatter from parents about APs, concerns about our shrinking population, the availability of APs, and the success of our kids to complete APs successfully. This is really good to answer a lot of those parents.
I don't have a problem with that.
This is, I think this will help a lot of people who.
Yeah, no, I couldn't answer that question, so.
Well, I know how to ask Kim, because, you know, she's, she's like, "No."
I mean, this is, this information is public. It's, you know, when they, we look at some of the magazines that are rating us, or you know, those national rating scales, or even Connecticut's rating scale, this is what they're rating us on. They're not necessarily looking at us holistically as a school, they're looking at us as figures. So I think it's important for us to be looking at all the pieces. Questions, concerns, comments for me? Thank you so much for your time, I really appreciate the opportunity to speak with you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Todd, thank you. Any other questions?
I just have a quick question. I was very impressed by that Naviance program you had. Are the parents and the students taking advantage of that?
We are. It's really, we're still junior-senior launch. This year, and I spoke to the board, I think, last spring about the SSP process, I spoke with you, but. with you, but student success plans became mandated law July first. So our student success plans are marching forward. Naviance really is our vehicle. So our kids are going to have a high access point in terms of that. The, have they gotten in yet? Part of it is we're a bottleneck of technology. There's a hundred, a hundred computers available at a time, so we're cycling those kids through into those. But they'll be working in Naviance, entering their goals, entering their four-year plan, and also looking at career interest inventories, learning style inventories. So there's going to be a high connection point with Naviance. It becomes much more relevant to them junior, senior year when they're doing scholarship searches, because our scholarships, the local scholarships live on Naviance in a searchable database. The college process is highly integrated with the Naviance. So freshmen, sophomore, they're sort of like, huh, yeah, it's interesting, but so what? They become much more interested junior and senior year with it. In terms of parent involvement, you know, we sent out letters with parent access codes. Not great response in terms of parents using it. Again, what I find is the majority of parents are using it during the scholarship search process because they can access the database, the applications are uploaded there. I think it's something that's going to grow over time, or like in year three of it. And year one was really a soft launch, so the last two years have been much more useful, I think. So as we move forward, we'll probably be fine behind other districts in that regard, but we're definitely moving forward with it. We're also using Career Cruising, which is another online career program, and it's middle school, high school for Career Cruising. And the reason we're using that is because I like the assessments better in Career Cruising. Some of the things that kids can learn about themselves as learners, and learn about their futures in Career Cruising are stronger, and we're going to reintegrate those into Naviance. Naviance down the road for me, I like Naviance, but I'm not a hundred percent sold on it. And I think as we move forward, either in the Google realm or digital portfolios, I think there's ways that we can encourage kids to own it more than just buying a product. Naviance has it as a prepackaged, and it's pretty, I like it a lot. I think it's the interaction tool between parents in terms of email blasts that we can do, and what they can see their kids are doing is great. But I'm interested to see what the future will hold.
No, thank you very much, Todd. Excellent job.
Thank you, Todd. This is the email, this is my references for tonight. If you'd like them, you know, you've got spare time on your hands and you really want to go read some of these articles, this is my references.
I do want, I can just mention me and Todd here, and I'm looking at Kim. In a lot of districts and regions, there would be some kind of stipend for some kind of position for the head of guidance that was really overlooked, not only, not administrative provision, but just a, some kind of stipend for someone who puts together all of the information, the data, deals with all of the pupil personnel in the schools. So down the road a piece, we may want to think about that when we come into budget and contractual.
Do you think that what Todd's position is, the head of guidance?
No.
Entitled. I'm sorry, entitled.
Just entitled.
Okay.
Just entitled. Just as an aside.
Thank you.
Okay, yes.
Next item is number eight, Smart Boards.
If you can look at your seat at the location, I left a packet for you that I'm going to go through with you. I would like you to replace what was sent to you in the packet for Smart Boards with this upgraded packet. It's got more up-to-date information in it, so we're going to walk through that.
Yes.
Smart Board summary. It starts with Smart Board summary, there's one right here.
Oh.
There you go. Okay. So before I actually start down the summary, I just want to explain what's in the packet. The first page is the summary that I'll be going over with you. The second two pages are actually the schedule that we use to install the Smart Boards, and you can see that as of this Friday, all of our Smart Boards will be installed across the region. And then you will find in the packet two different spreadsheets. The first spreadsheet, which I believe is four pages long, is the actual allocation of the money that was already spent. So that's this round of purchases. But in addition, there is another workbook that's two pages long, where I went through and calculated what the cost would be for us to go through and put Smart Boards into the areas that currently do not have them. And I grouped them by department and by school, so we'll talk about that as we go through the summary. Okay? Okay? All right. So the spreadsheets have very detailed information in them concerning where the boards are in every school. The summary information on the front will just give you an overview. So first of all, total number of Smart Boards that were installed per school. We have six at Booth, six at Burnham, nine at Washington Primary School, ten at the Chappaud Middle High School complex, and all of our boards that we purchased were upgraded from the original six-sixty boards to the eight-eighty boards. Suffice it to say that there are two primary differences in the boards. The technology itself improved with the eight-eighty boards. But one of the biggest pieces that the teachers will notice is that on the eight-eighty series, you can have more than one touch point. So you can have two students up at the board working at the same time, whereas the six-sixty boards had a prob, well, it wasn't a problem, it was the way they were designed originally, that you could only have one person writing on them at a time. There's about a four-hundred-dollar difference in cost, and so that, plus the addition of being able to write on them with regular whiteboard markers, was a plus at the elementary school. But also, the actual design of the board is a little bit more rugged, uses a completely different technology. So all of the boards were upgraded, except in two boards that were purchased for the special ed department. And really what it came down to is that they're used in much smaller groups, and they needed to have a projector purchased in addition to the Smart Boards. So the only way that we could afford them was to buy them as a six-eighty board. But I don't think it will affect instruction in those rooms too much, because the groups are smaller. So what did this allow us to cover with these numbers? All classroom teachers' grades K-5 will have a Smart Board in their room, they already do. We covered one computer lab, which was Washington Primary School. The reason that we did not put the Smart Board in Burnham or Booth was due to the actual room itself. Booth didn't have a wall available, and at Burnham, there was a wall available, but the, the configuration of the room at Burnham was not conducive to using a Smart Board very well. There were giant columns in the middle of where the board could be seen, and so the decision was made to reallocate that board elsewhere in the district. So that was one of those boards that we sort of moved around from the original proposal. So all of the K-5 classroom teachers do have them, but for the most part, the Unified Arts teachers and the computer teachers don't have them. At the Middle High School, we looked at trying to cover the boards in specific areas. So what we did is we installed six-twelve all math instructors. So every math teacher will have access to Smart Boards. All the science instructors, six through eight. I'm hoping in the next round of purchases that we can cover the other high school science teachers, so that they can work as a vertical team to try to utilize those boards effectively in the classroom. We did put one pilot Smart Board in the World Languages Department to sort of get an assessment of how well they're utilized in world languages. So we have one that will be installed there this week. And we did put two, two special ed boards as well here at the middle school, high school complex. So in terms of future budgeting, which is really what I know that you had questions about, in order for us to cover the rest of the world languages from grade six through twelve, it would cost us a little bit over seven thousand dollars, and that would cover that department. Humanities. Now remember with humanities, we're talking social studies and English teacher. This is really the biggest bang for your buck, because we can buy, I think it came out to be about four or five boards, which can cover nine teachers, or eight teachers. Is it eight or nine? How many? Nine. So for a little over nine thousand dollars, we can cover all, that entire department. Now you're going to notice that one that I left off the list here, the middle school humanities, I do have a number for that, which is eleven thousand, seven hundred and forty, but I didn't put it on this list because they are all currently using Minions. So they have something to use right now while the other groups don't have anything. Remaining three special ed teachers at the middle school, high schools, another eleven thousand. The cost in that is higher because they don't have existing projectors. So the cost to install a Smart Board with a projector is significantly more expensive. And then if we wanted to reach down into the Unified Arts, K-12, that would cost us another twenty, almost twenty-two thousand dollars. My last little summary on the page has to do with the original allocation of the purchase orders, and you'll see that there was a change to some of them. So for example, at Burnham, that was where we removed one board and we moved it to the high school. So we went from an original expenditure of a little over twenty, or almost twenty-seven thousand to twenty, just under twenty-four. Washington Primary School, we, they had originally allocated boards for Unified Arts. And one of the things that we talked about was, I would love to put a Smart Board in every Unified Arts room. I really would, I think it's fabulous. But knowing that the high school and the middle school were not getting them in their core class areas, the decision was made to move them. And to say, well, we'll get around to Unified Arts if the money is available to us as we go, but I think that if we have limited funds, we really need to hit the core areas first, and science and math are areas that Smart Boards do very, very well in terms of instruction. So we really tried to hit those areas first. So you'll see that there was a big reduction at Washington Primary School. Booth stayed exactly the same, there was no change at Booth. And the middle high school significantly went up. It went from eighteen thousand dollars to almost twenty-nine thousand dollars, and that was because we moved these boards up. Overall, the difference in the cost is actually we were under by four hundred and two dollars, which is really just going to be banked for us in case we want to buy software licenses for math tools. We did buy math tools, which is an add-on software for the Smart Board. We purchased it for the six-twelve teachers, but with that additional money set aside, I'm just waiting for the last of the installations to go in, which will be Friday, and at that point, we'll know if there were any overages in terms of equipment, but I don't believe so. So far, we've been right on target. Okay? Do you have any questions, Karen? Yes? Yes?
Red mic. Just a question in terms of the Smart Boards themselves. Are these with projectors on curts or are they hardwired into the ceiling?
In some of them, if you actually look at the spreadsheet by school, it will actually tell you if it was installed with a short-fil projector installed there. None of them are on curts.
Okay.
So they either, if they didn't have an existing projector installed in the ceiling, which this school was primarily the location where we had rooms that have projectors installed already. The elementary school, many of them needed to have the projector arms installed, the short-fills.
I did some quick addition, which may be way off, but for future purchasing, I added everything up, it looked like about sixty thousand dollars. Got that right?
I got fifteen.
And I understand that that's also, that's also hitting just about everybody.
So, well, I'm just trying to get a, on the radar, that if we wanted to...
Cover everything.
Cover everything, we should be thinking around sixty thousand.
Right. I don't anticipate the costs dramatically changing in the next year or so. If anything, they might, the technology might get better, they might release a new one, but I don't think so because the six-sixty's been around for a while.
Yeah, I just, it's sixty versus two hundred and fifty or eight.
Right. Yes.
I know we're going to have, we have time before we actually start looking at the budget, but I just think that, and I'm all for technology, but I would love to hear how they would be used in Unified Arts before I allocated that much money.
And I have to tell you that I have to say that I love Smart Boards. I think there's other technology out there as well. And I think that whenever we look at the purchase of technology, you need to look at what it's being used for, and whether it's going to have a big enough impact. I can, without hesitation, tell you that at the elementary level and in math and science, Smart Boards have huge impact. I've also seen them have really good impact in language arts. I haven't yet seen huge impacts in social studies, but that's not for lack of people trying, it's just that there's not a lot out there right now to help people use them in social studies. I'm very interested in finding out what happens in our world languages room, because I think it will be very interesting for us to see what it can actually do in a world languages classroom. The beautiful thing about them is that they're in classrooms, so if it turns out it's not great in world languages, it's always possible that you can switch rooms or you could move it to another room. But I think that, I have a feeling, and Kim, I think you probably agree, I think it's going to do really well, just based on the fact that I've already talked to Mr. Nolan about how he's planning to use it, and he's, he's very excited. And one thing that I did have brought in as well is that Mr. Nolan is going to be highly, Mr. Nolan, by the way, is one of our tech champions. So he's helping us in terms of researching and developing whether the impact of certain technologies work in the classroom. And one thing that I have done is I've gotten the group that we've purchased the Smart Boards from R and B Enterprises, is installing in his room as part of the Smart Board, a Skype camera set that's built into the Smart Board, so that he can play with it for the next four or five months or so and tell us, did it have a big impact? Because he does use Skype. So using it as a classroom where it's built in, sort of like a video projection, so you can see everybody on the Skype. So it'll be very interesting to see what he thinks of that. But in terms of Unified Arts, I believe that we have one now in the art room, I think they have some great impact in art. But I, there's a lot of technology out there, and Smart Board is not it. So if we had a choice between spending sixty thousand dollars on Smart Boards to cover everyone one hundred percent, I'm not sure that I would say that's the best way to go.
Well, and I know we also have other technology needs, like our servers and such, so just, I'm glad you prepared it, it's good to know.
Absolutely.
I attended a Booth PTO meeting about two weeks ago, a Booth PTO meeting, and there were a number of teachers there. They loved these Smart Boards, and they said that their kids really are loving them, too. I've never seen them so excited about anything else.
They are, they are, they're very excited, and I love to see that, especially at the elementary level. It was really cute, when they first were installed, there was a little kindergarten that was walking down the hallway and saw it and started, he was very excited, he said, oh my gosh, they have a giant iPad on the wall. Because to them, it's very similar to an iPad, it's touch technology, but there's some amazing tools that are built in. So it's just a great way to get engagement, especially at the, at the elementary levels.
Can we rent this technology, can we lease it, or does it have to be purchased?
Well, you could lease technology in general by setting up lease programs, but you can't, it's more of a purchase over time, the way that works out. They don't really make them available for lease.
I just have a question. Is it a bummer that the two computer labs in the elementary schools can't have Smart Boards? Because it just follows in my head, and I remember computer class with that, since we're trying to go technology, that that would be an important place to get one in there.
Well, the interesting thing is I spoke with Regina Rourke, who happens to be the computer teacher in those schools, and we actually took a different approach to it, because what we thought was a really great idea was that she can co-teach with a teacher in a classroom and utilize the Smart Board that way. So she is getting all the same training as the teachers, as all of the technology staff are receiving the same training, so that they are well-understood in how it works, how to troubleshoot it, et cetera. But I think that this will give her an opportunity to go into the classroom and work with teachers in their rooms.
But the kids will get the same exposure theoretically as WPS has it in the lab.
Yes. Well, actually, the classrooms have them anyway, so they're being used primarily in the classroom areas. Burnham was very difficult, and I did include the cost of that in our Unified Arts budget, just because I know that Mrs. Kalella didn't want me to make sure that it was included, because she, she would really love to have one there. But I think that in terms of just, again, limited resources, seeing it in that, in that space, and then knowing that there was a science teacher or a math teacher here that could really utilize it, we moved it. Long-term, I can definitely see that if we had money and we wanted to put a board down there.
We also don't know what it's going to look like in a little bit, but also, what are those clicker things called that Mr. Scrola has? Like, is that an additional thing that goes with the Smart Board? What is that?
There are, they're classroom, they're basically, they call them clickers. Smart makes one, makes a set called Smart Response. He does not have the Smart version of them. The Smart version of them interacts with the Smart Board a little bit differently, but there's no reason why you can't use those clicker devices with, that are not made by Smart. Same thing with document cameras. Smart makes a document camera that interacts with the Smart Board, but...
Because those seem amazing, from what I've observed in there.
They are.
I mean, absolutely amazing.
They're very, they're very, they're very good for getting very quick data.
Well, they also, like, as a sixth-grade girl that wasn't a strong math student, like, I could put in an answer and not feel completely...
Absolutely.
Like a moron. It would have been nice. And then he can tailor the lesson on the result he's getting instantaneously.
Absolutely.
It just is amazing.
Rick? Just an observation, this is a teaching moment. The next time we have a discussion on long-range planning or something else, and someone points out, as I did, that the buildings we have are functionally obsolete, the reason they are is when you cannot put modern technology into a building room because the room... because the room won't accommodate it, your building is functionally obsolete. And that's, and that's, that's a problem. When you can't get it into rooms where you need it. That's an example of how a building is functionally obsolete.
I wanna, I wanna add just one thing on top of that. Because one thing we did run into that you should be aware of is that when we installed the smart boards in the elementary schools, the electricity, the electric system, big problem. When we first plugged in the smart boards, you were getting a visual up and down the screen that was making them unusable. So, what we literally had to do is take off the ground fault and plug it into a plug that takes it off the ground. Not a great idea, but that's the only way to make the smart boards work. So, the smart boards otherwise would not function without the
We'll get that added to the T-shirts.
Yes.
That's, that's exhibit number two, and I don't think that's a good thing. Was Don consulting on that?
Yes. He knows about it.
Don's involved.
Don's involved. It's because the plugs, the plugs are on the same circuit as the fluorescent lighting in the ceiling, and they're drawing, it's just not capable of pulling the same amount of electricity. The good thing I will tell you is that the smart boards can be pulled off the walls and mounted anywhere else.
Yeah, but let me ask this question though, because this has got me now a little worried. When you take the ground off of a plug, is this gonna mean when someone goes to have a nice interaction with the smart board, you're gonna get shocked?
No, that's not what it is.
Well, you've taken the ground off of the plug, it's not grounded.
I think what we're doing is we're really, we're sucking the life out of the electricity.
Hold on, hold on, hold on.
Wait a minute, I mean, I, I would like to hear from someone who knows about electricity, whether this is an issue. Because there's a reason why plugs have three prongs. And the third prong is to ground it. It grounds it into an outlet that grounds it back to the system so that you do not have electrical inconveniences, put it euphemistically. I, I think that's not something to be trifled with. And I think that we need to find the answer to that question, or we should turn them off.
Well, hold on, they, they said it was done with Don's approval, Don's overview, oversight.
Well, I understand that, but I, Don's not an electrician. And I, I'd like to hear from an electrical engineer that this is a safe and appropriate way to do it, or I think we should pull the plug on them to the meeting. Anyway, it's just mine, that's what I thought.
You know, I mean, I'm, I'm assuming that Karen improperly described it or not described it at full.
I, it's, it's
Do you assume that the system is properly grounded?
Yes, I do. There were electricians that installed it as well.
Yes.
And they know exactly what we're doing.
And Keith is an electrician, and I know he works very closely with Don. But I can, I can speak to Don and make sure everything is safe.
Would you please?
Yes.
Otherwise, they're gonna have you unplugged.
But these are, that's just one of the exhibits, as you say, at the schools that are just totally not up to today's code in just many, many different areas. So, it's just something, I think it's tomorrow night's meeting in Mary's Park.
Take some glass.
So.
I think there is a difference between the ground plug and a, and a ground fault indicator, GFI plug.
Yeah, it's a little plug that they put in between.
Yeah, the GFI, well, never mind it.
Okay, I will, I'll, I'll work on it, and I will, if, if they, if there's a serious problem, I will deal with it tomorrow.
Anything else, Karen?
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you, Karen. Thanks for your update.
Exactly.
All right, item nine, long-range planning, funding for research options.
Okay, this is a, although it says funding for research options, and Kelly has to put this on the agenda, there are many issues that we need to speak about, about tomorrow night. Okay? So, I'm gonna list them, and then you can talk about them in any order you'd like. The first one is, at the last meeting, we had a long conversation about Jonathan Costa. He has submitted, I've had conversations with him, and he has submitted a proposal, which is hard to pin down based on the fact that we don't really know exactly what we're gonna do moving forward. He is prepared to come tomorrow night, if we want him to, to be the facilitator or moderator, or whatever you wanna call him, of tomorrow night's meeting. He's also prepared not to come if we decide that we do not want him to come tomorrow night. He's also prepared not to come tomorrow night, but continue on after tomorrow night. Because tomorrow night is really the only time where any decisions are made. And after that, it's really just guiding the process of researching, posting out, et cetera, et cetera. So, that's the Jonathan piece that we have to decide. The other piece we have to decide is that when I formed the Goal Three Committee, I made Valerie the chairperson, whether it was something I was allowed to do or not. I did do it, I think she's done a very good job at it. But we have to decide if we're going to keep her as that committee chairperson or not. The other thing is, tomorrow night, we are having a meeting. I have done a lot of publicizing. It's been in papers, it's been on the TV, it's been in newsletters. I've spoken to PTOs, I'm expecting a lot of people. We're having it in the auditorium. We are going to have a, the screen down so that we can, again, brainstorm possible solutions to deal with the facilities. We will have one microphone at the side aisle where anyone who wants to speak to put forth a possibility that would like to be researched, we'll let them do that. We're gonna have very strict rules about what can be said and what can't be said. You're not there to talk about how much you love your school or how much you hate someone else's idea. You're there to sell your idea. And then we're gonna follow the same protocol we followed last time, except that people will vote on paper, and you'll just pick three choices, and we will tally that, tally them right there and then. Okay? At that point, after we have our, and this is the next piece that Kelly wants to discuss, after we have how many we are going to research, then we will schedule the next meeting, and at that point, we'll get into research committees and move forward. The only other thing I think I forgot is that we have to, I will have paper copies again, and we will go over the different criteria that we talked about last time, the educational, the fiscal, the economic, the logistics. I didn't bring that with me. Kelly's point is that we at some point, and please correct me if I'm wrong, have to talk about how much money or what funds we are gonna use to research these options. Because some of them are going to cost money. And so, I think those are all of the things that we have to do. Am I correct?
All right, well, with regard to Mr. Costa, he is the person that, as you know, that the first electman brought to the board. He's been involved in the process since that time to the present time. Where is his, I'm, I'm looking at the different proposals. What is the proposal for just tomorrow night, or how, what is his proposal?
Well, tomorrow night is like
Is this going forward?
It's four-fifty. Tomorrow night is segment one. He, he costs about four-hundred-and-fifty dollars for half a day and seven-hundred-and-fifty dollars for a full day. So, tomorrow night, which is a little over three hours, is, is a facilitation of the option selection. That's tomorrow night.
Okay.
And he also puts in here, which I think is interesting, and this has come out through the state too, is Ed Connection is seeking funds from the commissioner to support the implementation of this process. They're seeking twenty-five thousand dollars. So, we may be, if we use them, there may be, you know, we'll get in that, that amount of money, you know, reduced. But this is what he's thinking right now.
All right. So, with that said, I assume at this point, we could approve just segment one, ten minutes. Is that your understanding?
We could certainly do that, or we, yes, or we can approve
The whole thing?
The whole thing, or we can, yeah.
It's been suggested that, for example, for tomorrow night's meeting, that you could chair that, you could lead that. What is your preference? What would you like to see done? What are you asking for it to do?
My preference is to have Jonathan there. Only because I feel that Jonathan is an impartial person who can lead us and who has more information at his fingertips than I have. But if in any way, shape, or form, his presence there causes people to feel like it's not a, a fair evening, or a, that what comes out of it is bias, then I'd rather him not be there. Because I, I want tomorrow night, what comes out from tomorrow night, whether we have to be there for five, six, seven hours, is to have what we're going to research. Everybody gets a voice, everybody talks, but at the end of that night, this is what we're going to research. And if people are gonna say things like, "Oh, but Jonathan moved us in this direction and he didn't do this," then I'd rather him not be there. But I, but regardless, whether he's there tonight, tomorrow night, or not, I feel very strongly that he needs to move us past tomorrow night and go through the researching and the, the funding and all that stuff that he has, he's able to, to do with his expertise.
All right, thank you. Is there anyone who wants?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to move that we approve continuing with Jonathan Costa for the three segments. And being prepared for total proposed costs of somewhere between forty-three hundred and ninety-three hundred dollars for the full project.
Second.
All right, so we moved to the second, do you have any idea, have you spoken to Bob, whether these funds are available?
I have not spoken to Bob, but I'm assuming that we, we'll be able to figure it out. That it's, it's too important. I don't wanna hold this whole process up because we can't pay.
Well, that's only relevant, relevant consideration.
I understand, but I'm just saying that
Okay, fine, it's subject to the funds being available.
Subject to funds being available.
Is there anyone who'd like, it's been moved to the second, does anyone who'd like to? Kelly?
Yeah, I'm, I'm not in favor of continuing with Mr. Costa. I think that this process that he has done has been upside down. For example, I think that tomorrow night, we're gonna reach the same conclusions we reached last time because it's the same process on a one-day platform we worked yet again. My preference would've been to, Mr. Costa, Mr. Cobb, are you leaving?
I'm sorry?
Is Mr. Cobb leaving?
No.
Point of order, Karen, I would like to have us all sit down. Let's start.
Kelly would like, is asking
Mr. Cobb is recusing himself on this, on this matter, so I'm not gonna participate, and that's why I'm, I'm left.
Thank you.
All right, go ahead, Kelly.
I think that tomorrow night, we will reach the same kind of conclusion we reached the last time. I'd reject the premise that we can do that kind of planning in a one-session or a two-session outing. I think it would've been a better decision to instruct the public, bring them into a conversation, tell them about our issues, our demographics, our financial cost problems, speak to them about educational trends with technology around the country. And do that in two long sessions. And bring the public into that conversation in that way. And spend the last year, which is really seventeen months, maybe looking at one solution per month. So, that by this time, we had a couple of really good, maybe creative solutions that we could look at, having done really good due diligence on it. We didn't do that, now we're at this point. If we're going to go ahead with Mr. Costa, I'd like to request that he be a true facilitator. And that he facilitate the conversation amongst our stakeholders and not be someone who offers opinions. A true facilitator is what I'd like to see us have. In that light, I'm not sure that Mr. Costa and Ed Connection really have the experience to do the kind of work we need to have done in the upcoming conversations. Nineteen of the twenty solutions that were put on the board on the twenty-fifth of last month had to do with some kind of change to the district plan, to the regional plan. That, to me, implies that the kind of consultant we need needs to be a specialist in regional reorganization issues. Ed Connection is not that organization, Mr. Costa, that's not his area of expertise. I think Dr. Costantino has worked with Dr. Ca, with Mr. Costa in the past quite a bit, correct? At Bethel High School?
No.
And he had his academy installed there and
But he, he didn't work with me. I didn't work with him.
But that's the kind of thing that Ed Connection does, and I think we're gonna try that here, Ryan, as well.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
But not with him, it's under his purview of the program director, but I don't work with him.
But that's, that's the kind of thing that Connection does. This is a very peculiar situation in this district. You have to have three towns that are brought together, and you can't have, you can't do anything. We can, we can hope to do something, you can't do anything unless these towns agree to a reorganization of our district. If we have a leadership, a consulting leadership that's not expert in this area, I don't think we're gonna make progress. Now, we might hopefully make progress, but I just don't think that that's gonna happen. And you can spend a lot more time and get absolutely nowhere. I'd rather see us hire a consultant that has expertise in this, this topic.
Okay, thank you. Just, I just wanted to say a couple of things with regard to Mr. Costa himself. I know that he does have some experience in this. His job, as I see it now, is a facilitator. Now, section two is more facilitation. But his job, I see it as, is to get to consensus, to try to help us to get up, have everything aired, and to reach some broad goals that can then be researched. He does have experience in that, he's doing the Norfolk Culver thing. He's, we've seen his resume that he's done it in a number of other districts that have talked about district problems, not exactly the same as ours, but regionalization issues, coming together, breaking up, those kinds of things. He's got experience in looking at that. If, if an option is selected that you feel that his outfit, or he is not the best expert to have, for example, looking at a deregionalization or looking at a modification of the region in some way, and you feel that there's someone more appropriate, then that's one of the items, that's this nine, item nine, it's on the agenda. How do we fund those research options after we get there? But my understanding is that his, Costa's goal is to assist the superintendent in facilitating this meeting, getting through the meeting, and then being able to facilitate going forward. But not necessarily to be the research person if we feel that there's somebody better. Marty?
I think I must've missed something. I haven't missed a meeting, but I'm not sure what this issue is that is so important.
Well, the Long Range Planning Committee had a meeting, the last meeting it had, assembled, heard a large, a large number of options and whittled it down to three, three or four. Five. This meeting tomorrow night at six o'clock in the auditorium is to basically be a redo of that process, to be sure that everyone's had noticed that all the stakeholders who are interested have the opportunity to be fully heard within reason, and for the group to arrive at a number of options of
Well, what if we can't be at that meeting tomorrow night and we don't know what this is all about?
Well, if you can't, yeah, if you can't be at the meeting, that's, that's a problem. But it's been well-publicized as to what the meeting is all about, I've seen.
The first one, there was a very small sample size, once we reflected on it.
Well, I must've missed a lot because I don't
Well, this is a long-range plan, and you haven't been on the long-range
No, I haven't.
No, so don't worry, you didn't
Our last Board of Ed meeting, we, Dr. Costantino discussed this, that she would like to do a redo. It was talked about and it was agreed that we would basically have a redo of this meeting with as large a group assembled as could be brought in.
Okay. I have similar concerns that Kelly has. I think that it, going back to how it was all brought forward, and I know the history is history, that, you know, we had, we didn't even research any consultants. We didn't research any facilitators to move forward. We didn't get to choose or find who would be the best candidate to move us forward. This is something that was just given to us, and we kind of went forward with it. I also think that because we are the region we are, we are a very special environment here. And there's been a lot of legal concerns that have come up in the past. And it needs to be handled with someone who knows about regionalization, deregionalization, working together, reorganizing, doing all that stuff, someone with those skills in place. And actually have that person be our facilitator that can see us through all avenues and not just one portion where we have to, this is money that we keep putting out for these other things that could be allocated towards our education of our children. And if we have to hire someone else, that budget goes up more and more. It really is finding the best person to lead us through, not just the person that's It really is finding the best person to lead us through, not just the person that's available at the time, and to really find the person that can embrace the five that we get it down to and get us through all those avenues and not have to hire any additional consultants, to really have that best individual and make that decision as a unit and not just something that was pushed upon us. I think tomorrow night, just to get it out there, I don't think that we even need that facilitator. I think Dr. Costantino would be able to do a great job with that, to get us through there, to give us her information, as she has a thought process that she just explained to us that she's going to work through tomorrow night, and I feel very confident in that. So, you know, that said, I feel that we need to find the perfect facilitator, not just any facilitator.
I think that that would sound perfect. If you could find me that person, I would sign up, but I'm not sure if there is a perfect person that's going to be an expert at everything that we're going to throw at them. And I personally feel that tomorrow night could be very interesting, and I, just like I said before, I want someone else with Pat when we go through with this. It's just my feeling. And Jonathan seems to be what we have right now, and I do agree with what Jim said, he's not going to be the person that's going to be heading up the five we come to and going forward with that, because you're right, he's not an expert in everything, but he's only there to be a facilitator, not an expert.
Okay, Alan, thank you.
Yeah, I think it's important to notice that he is going to facilitate analysis of the options and provide guidance to any external providers or consultants that might be used to inform the study of the options to be considered, because there's going to be a lot of information, once we get these options, there'll be a lot of information that we're going to need to analyze them, and I think education connection strengths not only lie with our facilitation of our meetings, but with the complex planning that's involved, with the leadership in these long-range analyses that are involved, and also in knowing the players in the state of Connecticut who can help us when it comes to weighing the merits and the debits of our different options. So I feel that he's the right man to stand next to our superintendent and guide us through the end of this process.
Okay. Kelly?
My real preference would be that we do not hire any consultant, that we use our new superintendent in that position. I think a lot of the complaints about our prior superintendent revolve around not moving ahead on his issues, it's a strategic position, he's a strategic issue. That's perfect for the leadership of our superintendents, and I'm a little disappointed that we are not simply trying that way first.
Okay. Anything else? Can you vote? It's moved in second to, the motion is to hire, continue to hire Mr. Costa for Segments One, Two, and Three, is that right? Proposed with expenditure between $4,300 and $9,300. Anything further? All those in favor?
I'm sorry, I'm one question. That's a huge range, $43,000 to $9,300.
It has to do with the, if you look at Number Two, I wondered about that, too. The range comes from the second one because it depends on what our...
The number of options.
The number of options and how seriously we want to, you know, whatever the constituency are.
I certainly want to involve him in that portion of the show.
The multiples of 750, I think.
Yeah.
Any further? All those in favor, say aye. And you oppose?
Abstain.
Two opposed? Two opposed, is that right?
No, I wasn't opposed.
Okay.
Oh, no, it is two.
There are two opposed.
Yeah, two opposed. And abstain?
Two abstained.
Okay. All right. Then the motion passes. Now, what's the next item?
That's every.
Well, under this, okay, we still now have to decide if Valerie is going to remain the facilitator or chairperson, or whatever you want to call her.
I don't think that's necessarily something, speaking for myself, for the board, to have to decide.
Okay.
I'll discuss it with you.
Okay, so we need, because she's expecting a call tomorrow to know what's going to happen tomorrow night, so we need to start that. Okay, fine. And then the other one is then really what's on here as the funding.
Well, this was brought up by Kelly. She asked to put it on the agenda. It's a good point that if certain items are arrived at as a result of the meeting tomorrow night, it will be, do we have money in our, we don't have money in our budget, at least money that we approved previously, to spend on any experts that may be needed for research, et cetera, is that correct? And to be able to look forward to funding options. Does anything further you want to say, Kelly?
I think that in this year's educational budget, we don't have any wiggle room to fund large projects in terms of studies, whether they be ecological studies, building remediation studies, architectural studies. So that's going to be a big item, I think. It's an item that could grow very rapidly as things are uncovered, and we don't want to be following that rolling, we want to be ahead of it. My suggestion would be that we only allocate a limited number, a limited amount of funds now until the end of fiscal year, and then we propose, within our budget, funding for these more expensive studies, and we put them in the region budget as they should be and lay them out.
Maybe, I'm sorry, Valerie's not here. This is something that she might have the, her committee look at to come up with possible options, and we don't have, until tomorrow night, we don't have anything that we need to research at this moment. We don't know what we're dealing with. So, but I appreciate you making us think about it, that, you know, we have to deal with budget issues going forward with these next. Thank you. Kelly?
I'm just curious, are the selectmen, are you guys...
They've been invited.
They've been invited.
Because they kind of got the ball rolling, so I kind of feel like they should be involved in this portion of the show.
They've been invited.
It's letters out.
I mean, it was their idea.
Kelly?
I think that the idea that may come up very quickly after the projects are identified, one idea is that it may come up right away as issue of parity in terms of funding, because if you have, let's say, three projects, three research ideas, I think that people may object if $100,000 of a study money goes to one and $10,000 goes to the other, to be very broad. So I think we're going to have to get ahead of that, too, and decide who we're going to be handling this with equity. And again, these costs for just the studies could really get quickly escalated.
All right. Thank you.
We have an open checkbook.
We don't have that. Greg?
Well, I think, perhaps, Kelly, you've overstated the problem because, fiscally, because first of all, I'm trying to remember a year I've been on this board, we haven't made a 1% contribution to the capital fund at the end of each year. That means we had something along the lines of $200,000 left at the end of the year that we put into that. We've also had many years when we've returned money to the towns because we even exceeded 1% in terms of what was left over. It seems to me if last year we could have $450,000 in special ed, unaccounted for, unexpected expenses come up, and we managed to get through the year and still make the 1% contribution, I have a suspicion that there's going to be plenty of money available. Also, the facility studies have already been budgeted and paid for, so primarily. So you're really talking about the, we don't quite yet know what we might have to research down the road, and maybe we'll have to spend a couple of bucks on an appraiser to satisfy the concern that some people had about the impact of school closures on property values. But that's the only thing that I know of that's out there that needs to be studied. That's probably a $5,000 to $10,000 problem. And so I kind of think this is, this is a solution in search of a problem that doesn't yet exist, and we don't even know, we haven't even budgeted, and by the time we get there, it's likely to be halfway through the fiscal year anyway. And so I think we'll get to the finish line. Then we'll have a much better idea halfway through the fiscal year, whether we're likely to see a large increase, like on the special ed side, or whether we're likely to see a large increase on something else or some unexpected contingency. I really think this is a solution, a problem, a solution in search of a problem.
It's an anticipation of an expense, yes, and we want to be aware of it. Alan?
Yeah, but, you know, we can't really do anything. It's good we've talked about it, but we can't move to approve anything, we know what the number is.
Correct.
So I would suggest that, you know, the next finance committee, maybe we just, you know, see what's available, cap into as necessary in the future, but right now I think we need to move on to 9A.
All right, I'm sorry. Anything further on this? Thanks for bringing it up, Kelly. 9A, Tony?
This is about the mansard roof out here that's been in need of repair for a while. We had, based on some estimates we got from some architects and so forth, we had asked the board for $25,000 and it was appropriated. Well, what's left of that is because we had engineers look at it, we had an architect look at it and do some work. Fuss and O'Neil looked at the asbestos abatement and some of the asbestos management work was done. Essentially, what we have remaining of that $25,000 is $12,110. We had, now that we had a set of specs and so forth, we put it out to bid, we got two bids, and one of them was out of sight and the other, the bid that makes sense was for $71,000. So what it turns out to be is in order to get that job done, it needs an additional Bob has suggested that we throw, we put in another $5,000 contingency, and so we need the board to approve $63,890 in order to finish that job.
Are you asking that be done tonight? Are you asking that be done tonight, that approval?
We'd like to. We had a, we had a facilities committee meeting tonight and discussed it, and the committee recommends that the board approve that.
Have you discussed that with Mr. Giesing?
It was discussed, yes. This whole thing was generated by, this whole set of numbers was generated by he and Don.
This is an expense he feels the board could...
It is, and the reason for it was when we first looked at that, we popped some of the panels under there and looked up and saw that it was a rusted condition. It turns out that when you start really getting into it, and what we thought at that point was we could just replace the struts that were holding it up and be done with it. It turns out that's not the case. It has to be taken down, the structural members have to be welded in place because there's all kinds of ductwork and conduits and everything going through that, so it's not a matter of pull them off, put a brand new setup there. So it's involving a lot more work than we anticipated.
And this is to, like, fully repair the mansard roof?
Pardon me?
This is to fully repair the mansard roof?
Yes.
Is there a warranty with it? At one time? On the roof?
I would imagine, yes.
Alan, sir.
How does this fit in with the, I was just looking to, the Capitol Need Study Report in terms of the different timing and the different projects that you were having that assessment done for, the Capitol needs for the whole building? Is this something that can be treated as sufficiently separate or...
It's a separate item, mostly because, well, this started, what, two years ago, and we didn't ask the people who were doing the study for the high school to include that because it already was under, we were in the process of getting that fixed, so we didn't want to do that with redundancy.
Is there any economy of scale that you foresee having it be end-up part of the report?
No, we looked at this thing seven ways to Sunday, and it, this is the best we can do with this.
If one of the, if one of the options, tearing down the building and building a new one, coming out of long-range planning, is there any way that this could wait? Not that this is going to be an option, I'm just saying, you know...
Well, in order to, actually, what's happening is that the temporary pieces that were put out there are getting rotten.
Two-by-fours?
And so we would need to spend a few thousand dollars to shore it up if you want to do that. Is that possible? Certainly, that's possible.
We also have several parents, as I understand it, who have made comments that not much has happened at all to that project in many years. Ask why.
So the mansard is more than just a decoration, it's an integral part of the building.
If you take that off, what will happen is it will look really strange because the brickwork does not go to the top, and you'll see all the ductwork, which you could not just leave sitting out there, so...
Sorry, Greg?
Yeah, I don't, I seriously doubt that the recommendation is going to end up being that we demolish this building.
Well, you know what I mean, I'm just saying...
So, so I think it's probably unbalanced, as ugly as it is, as much as we don't want to do it, unbalanced, I think we have to put the structural integrity there of what's going on on the front burner, just get it dealt with. In the scheme of things, it's not a huge number, but it's just an annoying number because no matter how many times we thought we had looked at it, it just kept getting worse, the deeper you picked at it.
Michelle?
I just wanted to add that on September 10th, I didn't have the October 1st, but we had $304,465 in the 1% fund, just so we knew where that stood. I'm assuming that's where this money would come from, and it would still leave a balance for emergencies.
Michael?
Just to confirm that, the repairs could be done with a minimum of disruption to the school weekend work after school hours work.
Well, the panels that are underneath are transite, so they have asbestos in them, and they would need to be removed when there aren't any children under 18 years old on the property, and so that usually is a Saturday.
Doesn't happen very much.
No. Saturdays...
We'll work that out. It's not that long a job to number one, and so that's something we can work on.
Kelly?
I'm going to go no, not because I'm against roof repairs in my school, but because I really feel that we need to have a long-term plan for facilities that we stick to that's really accurate, and we often see $60,000 pop up for a pool repair, now roof repair, or a wall that needs to be structurally, such structurally sound. And I'd really like to see a, a long facilities plan that, with capital costs being realistically estimated, and get away from these immediate problems of crop up.
Well, this has been, it's been hanging out there for a couple of years.
Greg, I mean, this is a 40-year-old building. You can't compare it even to a 40-year-old house. It's got major structural components, and these things fail from time to time. This is one such failure. The pool was another such failure. When you have an old building, you've got to expect to have costs, and they're going to be unexpected, they're going to come down at times when you don't want it. That's why you should have contingencies built in, it's why we keep a 1% fund, so that we're able to meet these contingencies. This isn't a question of, we need a long-term plan. This is a, this is a thing that came up and has to be dealt with, and we have been dragging our feet and not dealing with it for the last two years. And one of the reasons why it took a while to deal with is because it took Don a while to get it inspected because he had to remove some of those panels, and he couldn't do it when any person 18 years, younger than 18 years old was on the premises. So when you have realistic situations like that, unfortunately, sometimes you've got to deal with them, and I think this is one such case, I think we should do it.
Alan?
I'd like to move that we allocate $63,890 for the repair of the mansard roof. This total includes a $5,000 contingency, which may or may not be necessary, and we suggest that the amount come from the capital reserve fund.
Second.
Been moved in second, is there any other discussion?
The one thing I would add is that 1% fund thing can be very tricky, and so the superintendent should make sure that she confirms with our counsel if necessary, or Bob does, that that's acceptable to do that, just because there's a lot of tricky things about how that...
It's usually non-recurring, but that's why I said suggested.
Right.
Graham?
We don't have, we're talking about $63,000 again, which for me is a teacher, and we're also talking about this, and we don't have two of our main financial people here and present. We're making these decisions without the ones that we go to for these numbers, and to actually have them be able to answer this. And I just keep going back, we keep putting this money out there, and this is a teaching position. This is someone that can enhance our child's education, and here we are talking about the roofs again, and not even having the financial people here to guide us, I can't support it. I can't.
Is there a question that you have that's not being answered?
Where is the money? Why is it, you know, is it really there? Because if we're, our students are going to suffer... Because if we're, our students are going to suffer in the long run academically because we're putting this money to something else, or trying to, Bob doing his shuffle game, or that he does, you know, trying to find out money, you know, I just think we need to have more answers by our financial people. Valerie's not here, and Bob's not here, and you want us to just hand over sixty-four thousand dollars? It's not comfortable.
Well, we've had a report from our facilities committee, they met, it's been discussed, I understand, with the business managers, all right?
The business manager put this together, and that's where the numbers came from, and it was his suggestion to put in a five thousand dollar contingency. I don't believe that he would have suggested this and given this to us had he thought he didn't have the money, or, I mean, it's not like he hadn't looked at it.
Anything else? Michelle?
Well, the three hundred and four thousand dollars that's in the one percent fund can't be used for teachers, it's for capital, non-recurring expenditures, so it's intended for capital projects and maintaining our buildings, and that's what we're suggesting it be used for, so I think that should not be a problem.
I do get that, but when I see these numbers and the community sees these numbers, that's what they think of first, of where all the money goes to and where the cuts are, and it always comes out of education in the end. I understand what the non, the one percent, non-refunding capital, whatever, is, but again, this is sixty-four thousand dollars, it just keeps adding up, everything keeps adding up, and it's education that suffers in the end, whether, it just makes me crazy.
Well, it's a repair to a roof.
It just makes me crazy.
It's not a cheap item, and it's a tricky, tricky item, and the board has to decide whether it's going to let the roof go or repair it. Kelly?
Do we have this roof item, you know, in a long-term capital plan as something that needed to be fixed in X year, maybe 2014, 2015, and it's early, or do we just not have a long-term capital plan with the roof in there as a...
I would doubt that it was in there before it fell off. I mean, I don't know. Did you know?
It wasn't. We noticed that the roof was sagging, and when we started looking at it, probably the mansard roof all the way around the building might need repair at some point. We've got a capital need survey that is a booklet, and it's the same booklet, just about the same booklet that you can find in the office that was there. This is probably the third time we've done a study and we don't do anything about it, and if we can continue to not do anything about it, that'll work fine. But, I mean, this is, you know, this is one of those things that there's no way you can put this in a plan. I don't, you can look around the building, and you can see things that are wrong, can you predict whether the next piece of mansard roof is going to fall off? I don't think so, but maybe someone can.
Alan?
So this seventy-one thousand dollars is just for one section of our roof?
It's a ninety-foot section of roof, yes.
Mostly around the pool.
It's on that pool side, yes.
It's not the roof, it's something that hangs off.
The mansard is the rectangular piece on the edge.
It's a projection off of the side of the building, it's not part of the roof over the building.
I understand.
It basically is there to cover conduit and pipes and things that are going through that area.
Okay. Any further discussion? Moved and seconded, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Two opposed. Any abstaining? All right, it's passed.
One abstaining.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't see that. The motion passes, we're not done?
No.
Okay.
Oh, we have to...
No, I'm sorry, I understand.
And then we have number eleven. With that gap in your hand.
All right, item ten, opportunity for the public to comment on the agenda items, or anyone who wishes to address us. See no one, thank you. Item eleven, future board retreat dates, Dr. Costantino.
Yes, I'm trying to get us to have a board retreat, you know, something here where we can do some real academic information. I told you about the film I wanted to show you, I would love to get someone from our law firm to come in and talk about board policies and regulations, talk about, I want you to talk about the new teacher evaluation. So, these are the dates that I put down, and, I don't know, I put Saturday, November third.
On a Saturday, what time of day are you talking about?
No, I'm crazy, on a Saturday, okay.
No, I am at, what time of day are you talking about?
I'm talking nine to twelve, that's what I'm thinking. Okay? Okay, okay, how about Monday, November twenty-sixth? Because it's no board meeting, and normally we're all pretty free.
Isn't that now like Thanksgiving or something?
No, that's not a Monday, we don't have Thanksgiving on Monday.
No, Monday, the twenty-sixth, unless I look at the wrong day.
It's Monday after Thanksgiving.
It's the Monday after.
Right, right, right.
Right, it's the Monday, how about the Monday night after Thanksgiving, six o'clock? I'll have pizza or something.
I don't mean to be impatient, but what about the twenty-ninth of October?
It's sixth grade music night, and what do they do?
No, it's too soon.
Like the singing, a concert?
I don't think they're having it that night. I think, yeah, November...
Strings is the first, November first.
Okay.
We're between teachers.
Have they changed it?
Oh, we're between teachers, so there you go.
Oh, of course, I was thinking of that, right, okay.
Monday, November twenty-sixth?
Monday, November twenty-sixth, six o'clock, great, thank you.
Six o'clock?
I like the climate bacon piece.
Okay.
Motion to adjourn?
Well, when is it going to happen then?
I'll give you an agenda, I want to, I want the administrators to come also, we definitely need to talk about the teacher evaluation. I may get someone in to talk about board policy and roles and responsibilities.
You calling this a board retreat?
It's a board retreat, a board workshop retreat.
What do you intend, are we working or retreating?
You're both.
Your motion to adjourn?
Yep.
Adjourn.
Thank you.